I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council and like to ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah.
Councilmember Divala?
Here.
Councilmember Kostic?
Here.
Councilmember Siemens?
Present.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
And Councilmember Cersei?
Here.
Thank you. Just, I think there were a bit of confusion, our agenda this evening, and I just wanted to make sure everyone knew the order of the work sessions. We're going to go first, an election update, so we don't, the Board of Elections wait until midnight to talk. And then we'll move into the proposed resolution on principles and overarching goals for tree canopy and urban forest policies, and then we'll dig into the tree ordinance. But I imagine the resolution and the tree ordinance will go back and forth on that. So just wanted to clarify that. Looking at our agenda moving forward, next week on July 8th, our voting session will be reappointing Kathleen O'Toole as the Tacoma Park poet laureate. Depending on how far we get tonight, we have tentatively scheduled votes on the tree canopy goals and first reading ordinance amending the Tacoma Park Code Title 12 Trees and Vegetation, Chapter 12.04 General Provisions, Chapter 12.08 Provisions on Maintaining Undesirable Vegetation, and Chapter 12.12 Urban Forest. But if we are not in a place to do our voting next week, we will move that to the following week. Work sessions next week will be looking at the results of the survey and discussing the exterior design on the library. We have a charter amendment to accommodate by mail voting, election code revisions to accommodate vote by mail, and a work session on our first budget amendment for FY21. So that's next week. On July 15th at 7:30, we will have a public hearing on proposed charter amendments enabling the city election to be conducted by mail. Our voting session will be a first reading charter amendment resolution enabling the city elections to be conducted by mail, first reading ordinance approving the FY21 budget amendment number one, first reading ordinance amending the election code to accommodate vote by mail, and tentatively the second reading ordinance on the trees. Our work sessions will be election ordinance and MML legislative action requests. Then on Wednesday, July 22nd, our meeting will begin with a presentation of our new AV BikeWay presentation, and we'll have a voting session, second reading ordinance approving the budget amendment, second reading ordinance amending the election code to accommodate vote by mail, first reading election ordinance, resolution providing for appointments to our Tacoma Park Youth Council, a resolution approving submissions of MML legislative action requests, and a work session on checking on our COVID-19 response. And then on Wednesday, July 29th, we have a voting session, our second reading charter amendment resolution enabling the city elections to be conducted by mail, second reading election ordinance, and a resolution providing for city council summer recess. And that's our agenda. It's pretty packed for the rest of July. And just stay tuned for any changes, particularly in the tree ordinance, and those will be updated on the city website. For this evening now, is George with us to do the update for the youth council? Ms. Carpenter, you're on mute if you're trying to speak.
Let me see if I can locate him. He is not on right now.
Okay.
I will get back to you. You should, you could start.
We should go.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so then our next item is public comments on voting items. We have two voting items tonight, a single reading ordinance awarding FY21 community grants, an emergency ordinance suspending portions of the city code related to the postings of signs. No one signed up regarding comments on the voting session. So we will then move on to general comments. And before doing, I know, doing so, I know there's been a number of questions from the city council as well as residents regarding the development at Tacoma Junction. The city manager had requested additional information last week and has some comments in her city manager comments, but I thought it might be helpful if we started there with some information before going to public comments. So if I want to turn things over to the city manager for a moment?
Thank you. As you said, several residents and council members have inquired about the schedule of the Tacoma Junction redevelopment plan by the city's partner Neighborhood Development Company. The proposal remains in the Montgomery County Development Review process. Our understanding is that Neighborhood Development Company is continuing to work on its revisions and resubmission application to the county responding to comments and requirements that were raised in the development review process. Those plans will include more details about design and materials as well as rear elevations. I know there's been interest in that. The agencies need to review those plans to see that the revised plans meet their requirements and that their questions were answered. There may be outstanding matters that still need to be addressed, particularly, particularly related to the comments of the Maryland State Highway Administration. It is not clear when the county's development review process will be completed. When it is completed, however, the site plan, as revised based on these agency findings and comments, will come back to the city council for review and comment. This is the normal process under the memorandum of understanding that the city has with the Montgomery County Planning Board regarding the development review process. In this case, it's also called for in city council resolution 201841, where it says, be it further resolved that the council will provide additional comment on any modifications made to the site plan during the Montgomery County Development Review Process, and will include those comments in a resolution to the Montgomery County Planning Board when the draft final site plan slash preliminary plan comes before the Montgomery County Planning Board for consideration. As is traditional, the planning board will work with the city on the scheduling of consideration of the site plan so that the city council will have the opportunity to weigh in. As a reminder, if the Montgomery County Planning Board wishes to take a position contrary to a position of the Tacoma Park City Council, a super majority vote of the planning board is required. And under the terms of the development agreement between the city and Neighborhood Development Company, the city can end the project at any point. We do have information on the standard development review process. It does require that comments from the city council be received by the planning board with adequate time for the planning staff and planning board to review it before the hearing. So we're looking at some time before this element, this plan would come before the planning board or before the city council would act. Mayor, did you want to say anything more about that?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that in addition to what the city manager was able to put together for us to answer questions, which will be, which our city manager comments are posted on the website. I was surprised to read last night some emails that I received from members of the public that said that the final vote on the project was scheduled for September, since none of us knew that. And so I actually called the chair of the planning board today to just confirm, and he was also surprised to hear that considering the planning board's schedule for September is not yet posted and nothing is final. He did check and said that the planning board does not meet in the month of August, that for this project, the plans have not been resubmitted to the planning staff, and there is nothing on the planning board calendar for this project, not even on the tentative calendar. So just wanted to confirm that for everyone that this is, this has not been scheduled for the planning board. So, and I, and as I said, I went right to the chair of the planning board to make sure for me tonight, we had clarity on that. So, great, all right. Councilman Kostic, did you have a question before we move to public comments?
Yeah, if you don't mind, I just wanted to ask about one other element of that that I've had questions on, which was the intersection comments from SHA. And I just wanted to ensure, because it's my understanding that if there were any changes made to that intersection, that that would be a community process that the city would weigh in during that process, that the council and the community would have an opportunity to be a part of any intersection redesign planning that was done. Is that your understanding as well, that that, that would not be something that is done between NDC and SHA in terms of a redesign of that intersection?
I can't say that. Clearly, within the city council's resolution, there's document, there's a very strong statements that the council would weigh in with the emphasis on pedestrian safety and transit and bicycle safety. And so there's a whole component of that. There is a possibility that SHA could give comments to NDC that we would want to comment on. Those aren't forthcoming, and they would be shared in advance with everyone. The, you know, we're a little bit wondering the situation because a vision plan was supposed to come out and a variety of steps are supposed to come out. We don't know the status of that. I believe that that is a good reason why there is not a schedule established yet for the going to the planning board. And so we always have a public process. I can't say, because this has been an unusual discussion and public, an unusual process with State Highway with this idea of the vision plan in the, in the list of criteria. So I don't know exactly what they have in mind, and we've been waiting to find out. I, we've never had a situation where we didn't weigh in. So I, I do want to say that. I just don't know exactly, since this is a little unusual, where that falls.
Thank you.
Okay. So all right, let's move on to public comments then. The first is from Sue Miller. And just a reminder, everyone gets three minutes for public comments. It's Ms. Miller with them.
Sue Miller, Ward 3. "And yet, these are not normal times. Reconsidering the Tacoma Junction plan is overdue, not premature. The idea that we should wait is not credible. We must urgently reconsider it in light of the pandemic, recession, awareness of climate change, and our commitment to ensure that Black Lives Matter. I ask you to listen again with new ears to the testimony you heard here from Black co-op workers, Black co-op shoppers, Black residents of Maple Avenue, Black local youth, and Black business owners and workers from other junction businesses. Because their opinions were not evenly divided, they were unanimously, unanimously against the development. And they spoke to you despite personal risk in voices that were often frustrated, heartbroken, because the plan shows every sign of intending to squeeze out the African-American cultural institution and safe space that is the co-op and drive up rents in a neighborhood featuring a Black-owned veterinarian, music school, barber shop, hair salon. Please honor what these folks stood up to tell you, because many of their voices have been silenced by the gag order on the co-op imposed by the developer or other fears. I also ask you to think again of the 1,500 residents who signed petitions against this development and of the petitions and group letters you received from junction businesses, local youth, former council members, and local architects. Think again about the value of open space in the center of our city. Space that has been used in the last few months to pack food donations, to safely deliver groceries, and to gather for protest. And in light of all that has changed, reconsider the alternatives drawn up by local designers, particularly Joseph Klockner's open design with pop-ups and event space and a public balcony. Let's use this precious resource equitably for the public good, both during and on the other side of the pandemic. The DRC, the HPC, the SHA, all have told the developer that this plan won't work. It's time for the city to step back in. The junction is vibrant and full. Resident architects and economists and nonprofit leaders stand ready to create a more appropriate, light, flexible plan for this public space, one that will not inflict harm on our grocery store and legacy businesses, one that will build on rather than erase the diversity of our community. Let's create it together before it's too late. Thank you."
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Roger Schlegel.
Hi, I'm Roger Schlegel, Ward 3. Councilmember Smith exercised leadership last week in calling for a reexamination of the partnership with NDC in light of the city's deepened commitment to racial equity. Real leadership to me means taking an interest, showing imagination, and acting with integrity. In other words, following through to align actions with values. Consider how the partnership with NDC aligns with the new values this council has embraced in the last two years. First, our new affordable housing strategy. To align with regional targets, we intend to produce about 200 low-income housing units and 400 moderately priced units by 2030. What better opportunity exists than our junction land for creating at least some of these units? Second, our new economic development strategy prioritizes finding opportunities for underserved residents. Will our junction development foster the creation of wealth by Black and Brown residents of our community, against whom the economic card deck has been stacked since this town's inception? Third, our new climate response strategy calls for all new construction to prepare us to be fossil fuel-free in two decades. Will our junction development exemplify this commitment? Will it preclude intersection reconfigurations that we know would induce demand and increase emissions? Finally, our racial equity commitment. Time and again, Tacoma Park has reached decisions leading to public spaces and underused properties being reserved as gardens, sited with transformer stations, dug out with moats, or simply left and neglected. The effect has been to discourage people of color from assembling and expressing themselves in prominent public spaces free of supervision and engaging in small-scale enterprises. A junction development that privileges wealthy predominantly white entrepreneurs and customers would do nothing to dismantle systemic racism or build Black wealth. Simply promising to make equitable development happen elsewhere fails to honor our commitment to racial equity, which never permits kicking the can down the road. It would not bode well for the future at the hospital site, the John Nevins Andrews School Campus, the Crossroads, and Lower New Hampshire Avenue, places where we can't exert such direct control over the outcomes. Theologian Reinhold Niebuhr observed, not to decide is to decide. Not to decide whether NDC's revised site plan fits with the city's revised value statements would be to decide that these values don't really matter. It would suggest that our city's continuing core value remains the production of white wealth through investments and developments that increase property values for predominantly white homeowners. As a white person who's benefited unfairly from a racist economic system, I don't want to die in a country that is just as destructive to Black lives as the one that I was born in. I ask you as a council to exercise the leadership council member Smith is calling for. Do not fixate on how we've come to this point. Devote your interest, imagination, and integrity towards seeking an outcome for the junction that is true to our best values. Thank you.
Great. Karen Elridge is next.
Mayor, I thought Nadine Block is next.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Nadine. Sorry.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thanks, everybody, for their continued service on this funny platform. I'm, so I hope the folks are actually fully paying attention, because we're in a moment today, because the council has both an opportunity and a responsibility that may be missed. I'm not sure exactly where the information came from about the junction being on the schedule for September, but certainly it wasn't made up. It was written somewhere, and we'll find that and make sure that it's clear. So since I last spoke to the council, the COVID-19 virus and Black Lives Matter protests have helped many people, especially white privileged folks, to see more clearly what safety and security means to us personally and what it means for our communities overall. The veil's been pulled off of our dysfunctional system, exposing its failures and its failures to take care of all of its citizens, its blatant disregard for human life and well-being of both capitalist economics and profits, further exacerbated by racism and low economic status. There's much to do to address this problem, and so much the lens of the pandemic and current bold racial justice actions could offer to the council, if the councils want to listen. I'm assuming tonight we'll hear about many ways the city could act to show leadership in putting Tacoma Park on a better path backed up with actions, not just words. From demilitarizing our police, to committing to uphold our status as a tree city, to supporting renters and apartment building residents in this time of need. I'd like to point out one more thing that has occupied a lot of time over the past six-plus years for me and many of you. The junction development, which we do think is coming up for review very soon. And as NDC has told you, the city, they're moving on this. They're not sitting still. They're going to put forward a new plan, even as you prepare to go on vacation. We are not actually comforted by the fact that you should be able to have impact, input into it before a meeting happens at the county level. We want to make sure that that is actually something you do intentionally, because we've seen in the past that sometimes things like that don't actually happen. So I'm here, I'm actually here tonight to ask you to take your leadership potential seriously, right? To remind you of your commitment and responsibility to review any new NDC plans before it goes to a final county vote, and to put actions in motion to match words on racial equity, health, and security of our community, including, as was mentioned, supporting the existence of public space, which was so visibly valuable to those of us paying attention in the last three months, as a staging for safe gathering, as staging for food delivery, as staging for grocery pickup. Also acknowledging the climate crisis and our commitment to a fossil-free future that doesn't have a need for an underground garage, or the pressure to reconfigure a historically valuable.
Thank you, Ms. Block. That's three minutes. Thank you for your comments this evening.
So I think I'll be sending you a follow-up, and I really encourage you to leave the junction behind.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Elridge.
The junction development. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Elridge, and my home is on Roanoke Avenue in the fifth ward of Tacoma Park. I have lived here for 40 years. I've raised my children here, and my child is raising her children here. I love Tacoma Park. I'm an activist. I was part of the group that created the co-op. I was part of the creation of Tacoma Park Mobilization, and I'm active in the Tacoma Alliance for a Local Living Economy through the Climate Action Coffee Group. I'm also a member of Community Vision for Tacoma. I support Black Lives Matter, and I'm currently spending a lot of my time in my home, finding groups that work on the intersection of Black Lives Matter and the climate emergency. So why am I here talking once again about the junction? What does this little strip of land next to our co-op have to do with our equity on racial equity and the climate crisis? So here we are, sitting in a perfect storm, COVID-19, the climate emergency, and a nation coming to a painful awareness of our institutionalized racism. I'm constantly fighting to find my optimism in amidst all of these challenges, as I'm sure many of us are. I was really proud of our city when we committed to racial equity and proclaimed climate change and an emergency. But I was deeply disappointed when our city government decided to exempt themselves from using both the lenses of racial equity and the lens of climate emergency when it comes to evaluating how the city will use our land at the junction. I would ask all of you to put on the lenses of racial equity and the climate emergency we're about when evaluating where we are in the development for the junction. NDC has not fulfilled their end of the agreement, and it seems now in 2020, in the midst of the climate change and the other things that we are dealing in the 20s, we could walk away from this with very little pain. Please take the time to look at the progressive cities across the country and see how they are using their lands to address racial inequity and the climate emergency. As the young folks out on our streets protesting often say, "We're tired of your words, and we want to see actions." I can assure you, they will not find the actions in the creation of a white tablecloth restaurants, retail, and offices as a reasonable use of our land. Please take a look at this piece of land and dare to respond in with these lenses in a progressive and creative way. We owe it to ourselves and to our future generations. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Next, we have Matthew Blumen.
Mayor, I have not located Matthew Blumen yet. May I suggest you move on to Liz Kleymeyer?
Sure. Liz is next. I know Liz that had something she wanted to. Sure. Liz is next. I know Liz that had something she wanted to put up on the screen. Ms. Carpenter, are you able to do that?
Yes, I am.
And Ms. Kleymeyer had asked for an additional two minutes, so I will... She will have fun. Liz, are you ready?
I'm here. Thank you, thank you. I'm here to introduce the written comments that 48 residents submitted online. This is in regard to the tree ordinance and the resolution. So we see clearly that there's been a real effort to include ecological considerations in the two documents, and that's our real concern. But we don't think the documents yet express the ecological objective and goals clearly enough. The language leaves a bit too much to the discretion of city employees that are going to have to interpret what the council meant. And what has to happen is that the council needs to express its own intent clearly and then provide the city employees guidelines for how to implement that intent. Because otherwise, we're going to be back in the situation of May last year when I first talked to, in fact, the first time I ever went to a city council meeting. And the city council members and the city administration in that meeting confirmed that native tree species were the priority. And then the council went on to approve a contract in which 76% of the trees planted were non-native. So what I had, I genuinely don't have a webcam, so rather than waste the space, on-screen is how we, 48 residents, would suggest defining the ecological protection objective and three goals, A, B, C, that relate directly to that objective. Just let me quickly clarify that habitat means food, water, shelter, and space, and for trees that especially means providing food and shelter for breeding. And ecological productivity means providing a lot of habitat per tree. So when we say ecologically productive trees, those are generally a subcategory of native trees that provide a lot of habitat bang for the buck. And non-native trees generally don't provide any habitat, and invasive trees destroy habitat. So I actually perceive, after a year and a half of discussion, that there's either support or a lack of opposition to most of what this statement says. An objective to protect and increase capacity of the forest to provide habitat, a goal to increase ecologically productive in other native species, and a goal to control and reduce invasive species. As I have understood it, the point of contention is not with those three points, but with the notion that public funding would be restricted to purchasing native trees. So let's talk about that. We have included in our comments a proviso that the native tree criterion could be dropped if no native tree is suitable for a site and if it is critical to plant a tree on that site. And then we have also proposed reporting and monitoring procedures so that that proviso is well delimited, and we don't find ourselves with 76% non-native trees again. It seems to us that that proviso should also address people's concerns about trees and climate change. First, let me say that the United States Forest Service advice on native trees and climate change is to pick the native tree that is best suited to site conditions, including climate change. And that's pretty much what the textbook for Maryland Arborist certification says. And I quote, "Select trees in areas where new plantings are limited to native species by legislation." So I'd just like you to bear in mind that the reason we're taking the time and effort and coming together as 48 people, because if you use city land and the limited tree funds for non-native trees, you will get trees, but you will not be helping the urban forest from an ecological perspective. An urban forest is not a bunch of trees. It's a web of relationships that sustain the life of the native flora, fauna, and other species that live there. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. So going back now, oops, do we have Matthew Bluman? Did he join us?
Timer, seven seconds.
Not that I see.
Okay, then we can go on to Diane Curran. Is she with us?
She will be in just a moment. She should be... Diane Curran is in the meeting.
Okay, did that work? Hi. Hello. Good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of the city council. I'm here tonight as the board president of the Tacoma Park Silver Spring Co-op. Appreciate this opportunity to talk to you. I hope you got the letter that I sent out by email through the co-op on June 27. And anyone who's watching, if you haven't been getting our emails, I encourage you to please go to tpsss.coop and sign up for our email so you can keep up with what's going on. We've been really challenged by this pandemic, and I think that we've done some really important work, and I want to make sure that you're all up to date. A lot of credit goes to our general manager, Mike Houston. Of course, you all know that since the pandemic started, Mike's been keeping up with it and taking measures with each change in it to respond. We currently have an online shopping system where you can shop any time of the day or night and pick up your groceries now on the east side parking lot where people used to park. That's where we have grocery pickup. West side parking lot is for parking. That's the city-owned lot. We also have something called Co-op-to-go-op, where you can order things that you really need in a pinch and pick them up the same day. And very exciting for many people is that we have, once again, opened our storefront noon to 9:00 PM. And I'm really proud of the measures that the management has put in place to protect both the staff and shoppers. We haven't had any staff get sick because of all the care that's been taken to protect our staff. So if you shop there, you'll notice limited entry, gloves inside the store for bulk products, a range of measures to protect our customers. I'm also really proud of that we are soon going to be the fourth grocery store in the state of Maryland to offer SNAP benefits online, and we're behind some really big stores like Target and Walmart. We also are in a program with Crossroads to provide double the value of SNAP benefits. So we're serving a wide range of customers with various economic abilities with our store. We're a small grocery store, but we're serving the biggest range of people that we can. And then finally, anybody who doesn't know about Small Things Matter, a volunteer organization in Tacoma Park, I'm sure you all do know about it, but for anybody who's watching tonight, this is an all-volunteer organization that uses the co-op as a distribution hub to provide groceries to 700 families in Tacoma Park. It's really quite extraordinary, and we're really proud to support this effort, both through providing the space and also we provide some in-kind donations.
Thank you, Ms. Curran. That's three minutes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Lee Peterson.
And I don't see Mr. Peterson.
Okay, then, and how about Mr. Bluman? Did he join us yet?
He should be available.
Okay, we'll go to Mr. Bluman then.
Oh, no, he is not. I'm sorry.
Okay, how about Ollie Swiers? I'm not sure.
Yes, he should be available.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Ollie. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ollie Swiers. I grew up here in Tacoma Park. My pronouns are they/them. Over the last 15 years, the city has changed in a very drastic way, and one of those changes has particularly broken my heart. It's not the increased traffic or $6 coffee prices. It's that I've watched neighbor after neighbor, families who've been here for generations, moving out. And more accurately, they're being pushed out by the aggressive gentrification of a city that is growing less and less accountable to the voices of those who've worked tirelessly to build it into what it is today. You may recognize some of their kids. Many of us serve you coffee and beer at local restaurants and bars, yet can't afford to live here. Those same people who fought for a nuclear-free zone, who protected our trees from being clear-cut, who used their bodies to physically prevent a four-lane freeway from cutting through town, these are the people you are now willfully ignoring in favor of a wealthy developer. In this moment of national turmoil, it's a perfect time to reassess our priorities as a community. So right now, you have two options. Your first option is to ignore us and move on with your plans to further the late-stage gentrification of Tacoma Park. Let the developer build its monstrosity and push out the co-op, which is, by the way, the only unionized service industry business in the city. Dismantling this is not a good look for you. It's a very capitalist Disney villain. Or you can take option B, which is to see that we are living in unprecedented times and realize that we cannot continue on as before. The co-op actually modeled the exact behavior in response to the challenges of the pandemic that you all need to be taking in parallel. They saw the urgent needs of the community, took a step back to reassess, then took initiative and changed their entire model of operations to fulfill those needs while protecting and providing for their staff. Can you say that you put in the same care about us in the same way? I genuinely would like to know. If your answer to that question is yes, that's great, so you can reconsider allying yourself with a project that is trying to actively hurt our community during a time when we so need to be able to rely on each other and gather in community. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Let's see, Adrian Combe?
I have not located Adrian at this point.
How about Julia Sifuentes?
Yes, Julia should be available.
Great.
Sorry.
Julia with us?
I thought she was. Seemed to have lost Julia.
Okay, we can, we'll keep a running list and go back over.
Okay.
How about Mr. Hubner? Is he with us?
Surely I will find him. All right, he should be, Paul should be joining us.
Thank you.
Is it my turn?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Hubner.
I apologize. I thought I was waiting for Sifuentes to speak, so I was trying to be polite for a change. Good evening, Paul Hubner, Ward Three. What I like to say is that Tacoma Junction Task Force, a volunteer group of residents who conducted a year-and-a-half-long study about the development of the city-owned site, concluded with the following goals for development of the site. And I'll remind you that most of you that sit here now were integrally involved in all of these deliberations and conclusions. The task force wanted to encourage motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists to slow down, park, relax, and shop within the local road and transit networks. And the State Highway Administration was to be a key partner in determining the adequacy of the intersection to handle any increased traffic and appropriate road improvements that might be needed. But SHA concluded that the junction could not bear the additional traffic that the NDC plan would create. They also said there would be no financing available for years. Is this another financial burden the residents are therefore expected to shoulder? A physical contribution similar to the giveaway of this public land to a private developer? The task force recommended independent, community-scale business, which could include the co-op or like businesses. However, NDC doubled their initial rent proposal to the co-op and concurrently has driven up rents for local merchants who overwhelmingly oppose the NDC project. The task force recommended a cultural meeting point for old and young in a diverse community that blended harmoniously with adjacent residential neighborhoods. NDC proposes a white-table restaurant as anchor tenant and eliminated any affordable housing as their first step towards profitability. The task force recommended the city consider a site for expanded community use, including a pavilion, playgrounds, garden space, and/or a park. The NDC development would shoehorn the residents in a side roof and be given public sidewalks as a substitute for the desired park, the desired park-like environment proposed by the task force. The task force also recommended improved pedestrian auto access with consolidated parking for visitors and employees working at and around the junction. NDC proposes building an environmentally destructive underground parking garage with total control of cost for the parking. So from where I sit, NDC has betrayed their original design. It continually spread up and out beyond the historic commissions and the residents' desires. The NDC development further infringed on the front landscape with the abomination that the lay-by will create. Their development will create an eternal traffic jam and eliminate the desired public space. I ask the city council to stand with your oath to foster and protect the welfare of the residents of Tacoma Park. Your loyalty belongs with us, not NDC. Vote to support the recommendations and goals of the Junction Task Force, the local businesses, and the residents. Do not recommend this plan to the county. And one big shout-out to Diane Curran and Ollie Swiers.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hubner. Next, we have Jessica Landman.
Good evening. Jessica Landman, Ward One, Washington Cherry Blossoms. I'm here to talk this evening about Junction, which, as you recall, I'm sure, since you responded to some of the questions I raised with you last week. And I thank you very much for your research in the meantime and the comments that you made at the outset of tonight's meeting. I want to remind you why I spoke with urgency last week. During the meeting, the periodic meeting that NDC had with the mayor, with councilmember Kovar and councilmember Kostic in early June, they said, as reported on the city's own website, and here I'm quoting, "NDC is refining the design of the project and expects to resubmit to the county in late June or early July for a technical review." They said they were following up with the State Highway Administration for clarification on the SHA comments. And they said, and I quote, "Generally, when a resubmission is made, agencies try to complete their reviews in about two weeks." Now, when they have told the DRC that they have submitted their completed review or their completed redesign, the DRC writes a report and sends it to the planning board. That report, once it's sent to the planning board, the planning board is ready to proceed. So you have reassured us that this won't happen before the city has a chance to comment because you have a relationship with the planning board such that they have assured you they will give you that opportunity. But I reiterate that if NDC decides to tell the DRC that that's their final design, the DRC report-writing and review process can proceed forthwith, could only take two weeks, and that report could be in the hands of the planning board very soon. Even if the planning board, as you say, has not yet scheduled their September meetings, it could be upon us very quickly, and the DRC report could be in the hands of the planning board. So you don't actually have a way of knowing that this is going to take all that much longer. But my question for you is, even if you're lucky and there is more time, how much more of this design process ought to be going forward before the city takes a look and takes a position? If indeed NDC is going to have a revised site design in the hands of the Design Review Committee of the county by the middle of July, since they said early July is when they plan to submit it, you will have access to it too, and you should begin that review process. We need to have an opportunity as a community to weigh in sooner rather than later, and I'm calling on you to look at... And I'm calling on you to look at all the things that have changed, as many in the community have said tonight, that have changed since the time that you first gave permission for this process to move ahead. We are in a completely different world economically, socially, and morally. And we really need to take a look at issues from climate change to racial equity and inclusion to the work of the complete streets to try and make our neighborhood pedestrian, bike, and bus-friendly. So I urge you not to sit on your hands and wait for time to go by and let this wait till the very last minute before you take up this issue.
Ms. Landman, that's three minutes.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, I just want to check with the city clerk to see if any of the folks, Mr. Bluman, Peterson, Combe, Su- Fuentes, if anyone has.
No, we're trying to get Mr. Combe on but haven't yet. And so I would move on to Gilbe.
Okay. Gilbe, yes, is next.
Oh, there we go, sorry, I was muted. I, I don't really need to take up a lot of time. I simply, I think, two or three of the people who've gone before me have said it very well. I am totally opposed to the development plan for the junction right now for all the reasons said before. And I think maybe one thing that wasn't mentioned specifically is simply that I will mention is that the co-op, pretty much everyone who works there is African-American or people of color. And they are a really well-run operation, and that's also been said. And from everything I can see, this development would be a threat to its business. And I don't, I, I just don't see any point in going forward with something like that when you have a really, really good business that contributes to this community a lot and provides good jobs for the people that work there. I wouldn't want to do anything to mess with that. I would only want to build on that and improve it. And I simply don't see that the current development plan does anything like that. And that's all I have to say. I can hand over my time to someone else.
Great, thank you very much. Next, we had Marika Partridge.
Julia Su- Fuentes is available now, I believe.
All right, then let's have Julia.
I think I unmuted myself, but I'm Julia, and I also am not going to take up that much time because a lot of people before me have voiced the same concerns that I was going to about the junction development. But I just want to reiterate that this, obviously, we want the co-op to keep going on and serving the community in the way that it does and keep meeting the needs of the community. And that's all of the community, not just those who are more able to access high-priced goods and things like that, which has happened in a lot of the rest of Tacoma Park. But also, I think it's important to think about all the other ways in which we could use this big lot for public and free space. And it doesn't have to be a permanent development like the junction, but it could be weekend pop-up markets or like, community gardens and things that foster community that don't require consumption and that don't further exclude, further exclude the community that we've been forgetting about for the last two decades or so. That's all I have to say.
Great, thank you so much. Let's see. Should we move on to Ms. Partridge?
Marika Partridge now.
Okay, great.
Hi, thank you. This is a real rare occasion for me. I, I believe that we need a co-op, we need a grocery store, and we really need the space that is there. And I'm really going to cut to the chase because I have been listening for the last forty-five or so and hearing my fellow citizens say how much we do appreciate the co-op. It's our, it's our parking lot. It belongs to the city. We've used it for some really important mobilization during COVID. And I want to equate it right away to community radio. I'm the founder, senior advisor now is my title for Tacoma Radio. We create a space, and people come to it. The city has the opportunity to keep this space. Now, I want to say proudly that during COVID times, we created an Ethiopian Amharic program on the radio station. Some things take time. So I want you to please be patient with that space. It's a very important space now. We don't need more restaurants to compete with the ones who've suffered. We don't need office space. We don't need the property for anything but an open space to let it come for local initiatives to flourish, as I believe Tacoma Radio has done, even for the city of Tacoma Park. We've created a space. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you so much for all you're doing at Tacoma Radio. It's, it's really been a huge resource, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great, now we'll move on to, is Karen Lovejoy with us?
I believe so, let me. Yes.
Great, Ms. Lovejoy, you're next.
I, I believe, oh. I'm trying to unmute her.
We still see Marika.
So.
Forty-four point three.
Bye, Larry.
Yeah, somehow I am not able to unmute Karen Lovejoy. I don't know why.
I did it, okay, Larry, I did it.
Let's see, huh?
I just use radio as the metaphor.
Okay, let's maybe we move on to Catherine Desmond, and we'll see if we can fix.
Okay.
With Ms. Lovejoy.
Yeah. Let's see, give me just a moment. Okay. Catherine should be joining us in a moment.
Thank you. Oh, and if I can ask people to state their name and where they live in the city. I was requested to remind folks to do that. Thank you.
Hello. Looking for myself.
Catherine, is that you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I may, my name may not be on the screen, right? I'm using my daughter's computer.
Okay.
I'm Catherine Desmond in Ward one, and I'm asking the council to rethink plans to develop our mutually-owned property at Tacoma Junction. As you know, I've spoken out against the NDC concept before, and I hold fast to those objections tonight. But now I see even more flaws in the plan. So here's my personal pitch. Thirty-some years ago, the American dream is what allowed me, a young, single, white, working woman, to be welcomed by realtors and banks to purchase a house on Park Avenue with very favorable terms. I even had vintage sheet music on my piano, "Our Bungalow of Dreams", copyright nineteen twenty-seven, the year that my house was built, for people like me. Well, two years ago, at the rec center one-on-one meeting with the mayor and the council, I was told that among the reasons for building the development was that the parking lot was dangerous, a place one wouldn't let one's kids walk at night. And though I personally never felt the lot was particularly dangerous, I felt it was being suggested that creating a high-end development would enhance public safety in my American Dream neighborhood. While safety is a concern for everyone, not just white women, I disagree that any parcel of public land should be made safe by gating it with plate-glass doors and fancy signs and excluding those who can't pay the price. Don't build another monument to white privilege on a publicly-owned lot. Stores whose rent and prices could hurt surrounding modest businesses from minority-owned, class A office space not likely to be rented by fledgling businesses, white tablecloth restaurants, twelve-dollar cocktails, cute outdoor spaces that require a purchase to enjoy. It's safe to say that many of the workers, maybe a majority, who will build the development will not be able to afford to shop or eat there, and thus, the chasm persists. Even if some tax dollars are generated to help fund city programs, a questionable assertion today, the development itself is a monument to economic privilege. Let those buildings be built on private land. Use public land to advance public goals that bring people together and share the wealth. So look now, before you take it away forever, at how this space is serving the public and could do so even more in the future, pandemic or not. Free parking for junction businesses, a transportation hub for buses, bikes, and scooters, a weigh station for pedestrians going to and from the junction or changing buses, an open-air market, food pantry, staging area for food distribution, such as what's already been mentioned, which Small Things Matter is doing. What about a solar-paneled, all-weather pavilion for arts or social organizations hard-hit by the pandemic? An outdoor theater, a fountain, modest-sized buildings that won't set the bar too high for prospective tenants, newly-planted trees, or a food forest? This publicly-owned parking lot could stand as a model of inclusivity in a town too long segregated by racial and economic barriers and veering dangerously close to exacerbating those barriers. Thank you.
You. Really right on time. All right, next, let's see, were we able to get Ms. Lovejoy's audio working?
I, we could. Somehow, it just isn't working. I don't know why.
Okay. Um, maybe we could see if we can communicate with her and she can call back.
Yeah, I, I will try to do that. In the meantime, you might want to go to Susan Schreiber.
Okay, Ms. Schreiber's next.
I'm Susan Schreiber. I live in Ward one. It's time to end the gag order imposed on the co-op during mediation with NDC two years ago and to allow the co-op to speak, and NDC two, for that matter. It's high time for transparency about those negotiations and the conditions under which the various, quote-unquote, decisions were made. For example, the lay-by. In all the discussion about traffic at the junction, there's the assumption that because the, the co-op nominally accepted the lay-by during mediation, that co-op leadership actually thinks it will work, despite the obvious safety and traffic issues, including when two delivery trucks arrive at the same time. Personally, I have no idea if that's the case or if the co-op was forced into a position where it had to take the lay-by in order to reach agreement with the developer on other issues. None of us knows. That's just one example. Muzzled as they are, the co-op leadership has scrupulously avoided disclosing anything about the mediation process, how decisions were arrived at, what trade-offs there were, and where the results have left the ability of our community-based grocery store to not only survive but thrive. We don't even know how the co-op has been evaluating its chances of staying open if the development is built, or if they've already been exploring the possibility of a move. They can't tell us. We do know that this developer has indicated no interest in the well-being of the community, its local businesses, its values. And this is the developer who, with no prior notification, padlocked longstanding local businesses in Deanwood, including a daycare center, church facility, and barber shop, and that Black Lives Matter organized a demonstration in front of the owner's home in response. Can you imagine what that demonstration would look like if it took place today? The community, including you, our elected officials, needs to have a full picture of what went on between the co-op and NDC beside, behind closed doors and the implications for the future of a community resource that has proved itself to be more essential than ever. I know you understand that if the co-op should fail, the community will hold commu- city leaders accountable. Now is the time to take ownership of this process from here on out, beginning with transparency regarding negotiations that may ultimately determine the co-op's future. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Schreiber. Let's see, should we go on to Marcia?
Try, try Karen Love, Karen Lovejoy again. Okay, Lovejoy.
Ms. Lovejoy, are you with us? No.
It's just not working.
All right. Should we move on to Marcia, Marcia Stickle?
Marcy Stickle.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks. Can you hear me? I'm on the phone.
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Yeah. Marcy Stickle on George French, Ward one. "We enthusiastically endorse community vision for Tacoma's. The city must reconsider junction development now. The open-air parking lot adjacent to the co-op serves the public. Co-op proactively exemplifies the lot's public service vital uses. During this pandemonium, allowing all our small, independent businesses, our CIVs, to survive, bringing us all together with social distancing and masks under and around the big tent. Once normalcy returns, ultimately, the CIVs will thrive again. Our small, independent businesses do not need a building filled with competitive businesses swallowing up the open-air public lot, now allowing also for social justice, other gatherings, deliveries, and parking. Our current local businesses do not need any competition. We wholeheartedly support our nurturing TPSS co-op as a vital, essential business entity, food and wellness store, enlightened employer, job creator, and social justice establishment, including a union representing the employees, a cornucopia of goodness. Since the COVID-19 pandemic, we see how critical the former city parking lot is for deliveries and safe customer groceries pickup. We shudder to think what would have happened without the sterling co-op model for maintaining social distance while safely accessing our bounty of food and other products, receiving national press attention and accolades for their model. We are still opposed to the dangerous, unworkable lay-by and prefer to retain the historic Tacoma Junction intersection with its art-deco, vibrantly-murled, medallioned pavilion park haven by VY Morrison Park. He was a national horticulturist. And you'll see the URL here where you can see the meaning of that park. We are opposed to the inconvenient underground parking, which will remove many mature trees from the to-be-projected development site. Please save and protect our irreplaceable, unique co-op serving us all. Thank you."
Great, thank you so much.
We might want to move on to Colleen Cordes at this point.
Great, Ms. Cordes.
Just a moment, let me.
Tree document.
Start now, Colleen.
I'm speaking tonight, okay, Colleen Cordes, Ward one. I'm speaking on the two tree documents the council's considering. As other residents have emphasized, I too urge the council to treat native trees as a much clearer top ecological priority. Like them, I would underline that a web of relationships is what an urban forest is, a living, dynamic whole. Native trees know this dance, and they play central roles in this intricate dance. I also want to flag how problematic the concept is of granting permits to cut down trees guilty of nothing other than being in imminent decline, with no need to replace them and no possibility of neighbors appealing the decision. It's not clear who would benefit from this proposed ordinance change. It's not clear how you would define imminent or how a thoughtful, qualified arborist would work with an idea like that, which does not seem based on science. It seems to reflect a misunderstanding, perhaps on the part of residents, about how hazardous trees are now handled under the ordinance. If the city arborist determines a tree is hazardous, there are no replacement trees required and no appeal possible. That makes sense. It doesn't make sense to create a new term, which has no specific definition, that would actually encourage residents to cut down non-hazardous trees unnecessarily. That would be a huge unnecessary expense for them. So why signal that it's something the community wants them to do? This is the time we need to value our elders and help them survive while we plant and nurture a new generation of trees, crossing our fingers that they will survive to take our mature trees' place. Last, I'm concerned about the bottom line in the Tree Canopy Goals document. The universe- The University of Vermont found 62% tree canopy in Tacoma Park in 2014. Four years later in 2018, it was down to 58%. And it's probably already considerably lower now, given the loss of so many huge white oaks last year. We also know from the tree studies the university has done that there are plenty of spaces on private property for planting. Setting our goals so low, just no net loss. In this context, sounds nonsensical. In a climate emergency, it makes the council sound out of touch with reality. It sounds like we have enough trees. My concern is that the goal does not set the context for your revisions to the tree ordinance. Instead, it appears the revisions to the ordinance you are considering, which would weaken tree protections, require. Tree canopy goals that also are weaker. Why else such an embarrassing goal of no net loss? It's unresponsive to both the climate emergency and the urgency of moving strongly to end the racial inequities in our community in terms of unequal access to tree benefits. Please strengthen that goal in line with our community's needs. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you very much. Um, Ms. Carpenter, should we try some other, go back or?
No, I would move forward at this point and I'm going to try to reach the people we haven't caught yet.
Okay. Great, then we're up to Julie. She with us?
She should be. So we have next Julie Bodie, Megan Scribner and Cynthia Mariel.
Okay. And nobody else from earlier has showed up yet.
Not yet.
Okay, let's do Julie, Megan, Cynthia.
The host is. With great appreciation to the speakers that have gone before me, I'm going to be, I'm going to be brief. The perspective I'm going to share is the immense value of the sustainable environment, both socially and naturally. Both the social environment and natural environment that the junction represents as it is now. And the richness of sustained biological diversity in the microcosm there in the little woods there. And in the long term, the sustainability and diversity have much more to offer. All the people of Tacoma Park than what the developers have to offer. What we, what we have is irreplaceable, what we have. I ask the council members to bear in mind these immense values of our common ground in the junction. In the discussion with developers. The continuing discussion, please don't sell us short. Thank you very much.
Thank you very, um, next we'll go to Megan.
Well, I'm up. So great. Hi, my name is Megan Scribner and I live on Lolo Avenue in Ward one. Here we are in a time of COVID-19 when all of us are facing financial setbacks, to say the least. We all need to carefully weigh how we spend our money. It is also a time for reevaluating our priorities so that our actions support what we truly need and value. I'm distressed that the city is acting as if it is above and beyond these considerations. The library renovation in Tacoma Junction are two examples of this. I love the library and I'm a regular patron. So this is not about whether I support the library. It's about whether the plans for the library are within our means and fit our needs. According to the design survey I just took, the latest cost estimates for the library's renovation is at least $8.4 million. And that is before the inevitable costs runs that always accompany such projects. It also looks to be a huge expansion, nearly doubling the square feet. And none of the three designs fit the space, the look to home park or fit the city's climate change requirements. I understand we already borrowed money for a library renovation project, but rather than continue on this path. And later decide whether we may need to scale back the project in the future to get better cost estimate. Let's recognize where we are now in terms of what we can afford and what we really need. Let's work with the architect or another one on a renovation based on our original version of the vision for the library and one that is within our means. As to the Tacoma Junction development, there are still many problems with the design, including what the rear facade design will be. We don't even know that. Plus, the world has changed. What is the city doing? Supporting a climate backwards building with new high rent retail and office space. And a parking garage in a post-COVID recessionary climate emergency time. There are many elements that need to be reviewed and revised in light of COVID-19. Particularly given how our changing economy is hurting city residents already burdened by high taxes, finances and development. We also need to recognize an important role the co-op has played during this crisis. They have become an even more valuable resource and must be supported, not crushed by the development. The city is obligated by your own resolution to review any redesign of the project. So must be sure to arrange for a work session in a timely manner so that you can address the design and let us join in the discussion. There is too much at stake. Just let things go forward as is. Please, 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 you must act responsibly and not saddle us with developments. We can help. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Um, next we have Cynthia Mariel.
I'm going to tell a personal story this evening. It's a story of community service in the time of COVID. My name is Cynthia Mariel. I'm a white Tacoma Park resident on the cusp of 70, retired and living on a modest income. Given my finances, I do not own a car. This is not a hardship because the public transportation system is well developed, accessible, and I am able bodied. Because of cost, I do not use Uber or Lyft. Other than public transportation, I bike and walk to complete errands and to get from point A to B. I live an abundant life in Tacoma Park. However, I need to manage well the resources I have to make them last through the month and tend to my health. Prior to retirement, I worked in public health focused on the HIV AIDS pandemic. I'm not a novice to unseen viruses that spread quickly and unknowingly and result in countless lives lost. I have taken a cautious approach to COVID. I do this both to protect myself as well as to do my part to minimize the spread of this virus. With COVID, public transportation is no longer an option I feel comfortable using. For the first time, I'm feeling the lack of car ownership, which has become a safe personal transportation space in the time of this virus. Due to the lack of a car, grocery shopping has become challenging. Just prior to the state's shutdown, I did two major grocery shopping trips to the co-op. I made good use of my 5% senior discount and 10% monthly member discount. I then held out until June before I went into a grocery store again. I just wasn't ready to take the risk. In late May, when my desire for a wider variety of produce was extremely high. I considered an hourly car rental so that I could expand my shopping options to Mom's Organic Market in College Park. The cost for the trip, however, was more than $50 and prohibitive to me. Nothing is without risk during the time of COVID. However, the TPSS food co-op has seriously taken minimizing the risk and prioritizing service to the community and to their workers during these trying times. I did become ill for two months this spring. I am so grateful to say that I did not have this virus. However, I was weak in pain and overly physically compromised. I rarely left my home. Without the co-op offering online shopping and pickup within an easy walking distance from my home, I would have not been able to maintain myself. I am grateful to the co-op for providing me and our community with healthy food options, local jobs. And services that intentionally prioritize community. For me and many others, the TPSS food co-op has become, has proven itself to be a first responder for our community. Especially during a time of crisis. Although such proof was not needed, I am perplexed by anyone, resident, city government, elected official or city staff. Who would compromise the ability of the TPSS food co-op to thrive and serve this community. Which the proposed NDC development will compromise. Thank you, TPSS co-op.
Thank you. As I'm asking the city clerk if we have anyone else who's joined us.
Not that I can see. Do you want to try Karen Lovejoy one more time?
Absolutely. I'd love to hear from Karen. See if we can get her on. Yeah, it still says she's muted, it looks like.
Yeah. I just can't, yeah. No.
Okay. Okay, well, we can, um.
Yeah, if I could interrupt for one moment, if there's anyone who had registered and has been unable to. To, to speak or to get on, try exiting and re-registering and join back into the meeting. And I will watch for you to see if you've been able to rejoin.
Great. Well, that's the case. Why don't we? We can move on to council comments and then see if we, if other folks join. We can go back to the people who have signed up. How's that? And I'll ask the city clerk to keep an eye out. So do we have any council comments at this time? Anyone on the council? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Three things I'd like to talk about tonight. First, there seems to be some confusion on Ritchie Avenue. With the law surrounding parking next to fire hydrants. I just wanted to caution people that the police are. Paying special attention to cars parked next to fire hydrants. And that it is illegal. I think it's 15 feet away from the fire hydrant and it's supposed to stay, but. You certainly have to leave room for the fire department to get to the hydrant in case of emergency. And because that's the use of the fire hydrants, the police are unwilling to issue warning tickets. So I encourage everybody to pay attention and not park in front of the fire hydrants. And I thank the police department for their diligence and looking into that. The next item I wanted to talk about. Really came to mind a couple of weeks ago when we were talking about having. Providing some space on the sidewalks and reconfiguring Laurel Avenue and a couple of other places in Tacoma Park to provide dining space for the restaurants. To help those businesses during this difficult time with the pandemic. And. As I've been watching, you know, I go to the co-op several times a week. And I've really been impressed with the, uh, with the way they have. Worked not just with their business, but with the community in providing, continuing to provide operations and food. For the community. They put up a large canopy in the, in the parking lot and. Been able to continue operations again through this very difficult time. I just want to make it clear, I have a couple of questions, really one question. And it's, it's, I'm not trying to start a fight here tonight. I know there's a lot of emotion around that parking lot and the. And the development project the council has in process. But I am curious, I know that. We talked early on in this, in this whole project about the, the fact that the co-op does lease space in the city parking lot. For some of their operations. They have a few parking spots and they also have some space next to the building to receive their deliveries. And yet through this, this. Spring and summer, I've seen the, you know, the co-op put up this big canopy there. They've had multiple delivery trucks. In fact, the co-op has said that the, you know, they can't do without the parking lot for their deliveries. And, and then I noticed that they posted the sign at the entrance to the parking lot that says that the co-op or the parking there. Is a community benefit provided by the co-op. And I'm just curious if that contract with the co-op has changed. If they're actually renting the whole parking lot now or what the status is. I wonder if the city manager could answer that for me. And, and do it during your council comments if you can. If not, you could give me an update by email at another time. And then lastly, I would appreciate Ms. Ledlow, an update on the cell antennas at Park Ritchie. I know that, you know, that subject came up from a public comment a week or two ago. And there's been a lot of activity since then. I would appreciate if you give. Me and the community an update. That's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Siemens. Next we have Councilwoman Cercy.
Hello. First, let me say thank you to all of the residents that came and provided comments today. It's, it's helpful and I can concur that, you know, the environment in which we are living is changing. And it is forcing us to start to think about a number of things differently. I recall that there were conversations previously about the possibility of building affordable housing at that site. And I will say if one of our goals is to try to ensure race equity. That that's something that should still be a possibility. So if our goal is to try to ensure. That there's equal access to opportunity in our community. We need to keep in mind that it relates to quality housing as well, quality affordable housing as well as job opportunities. Because right now we're missing out on both. So when we are talking about opportunities for a number of black and brown residents in the community, we need to keep those at the forefront. Definitely want to encourage folks to take a look, go back and look at some of our community survey results. Where we had focus groups of residents of color and asked about things that they liked. And things that they wish would change in terms of the city of Tacoma Park and some things that need to be worked on. And many said that, you know, the quality of the housing, not just the affordability, but the quality of the housing is subpar here in the city. So I definitely want to encourage us to continue to definitely be open to other options. But I want us to be open to the possibility of all of the options, especially if we are. Talking about what we believe might best benefit residents of color in our community. So again, thank you, thank you for the folks who provided comments tonight. A couple of quick things. Fourth of July, yay! Just as a quick reminder to residents, fireworks are illegal, but one of my neighbors, I guess, didn't get the memo. And so they're, they're letting off some right now. There, there has been a rash of fireworks going off. It's a regional thing. It's not just limited to us. But I do want to just remind folks to please, please, please. No fireworks. Also for residents in Ward six, trash pickup is scheduled for. It's scheduled for tomorrow, Thursday. So not Friday, Thursday. Sent out an update to just let folks know, but want to just again, let people know for those who might be listening. That trash pickup is for Thursday. Also want to thank Daryl Braithwaite and Ian Chamberlain for meeting with residents in New Hampshire Gardens. Yesterday evening via Zoom to talk about traffic calming in the community. One question for the city clerk. I know that we have agreed to allow some flexibility in terms of. How residents might administer or facilitate a petition for traffic calming. Is there, is that clarified on our website in terms of that people can use online petitions and other means of. Collecting signatures if they are interested in obtaining or at least getting in the queue for additional traffic calming measures?
It is not, this is just, he is not posted yet. We will get back to you with more information on that.
Perfect. Yeah, that would be really helpful and would definitely help me out a lot with sharing that information with residents. Just as a quick note, we had our pop-up, COVID testing pop-up. One question for the city manager is, is it possible for us to follow up with the county? To get an idea of when folks and how folks should expect to get. to get an idea of when folks and how folks should expect to get their results back? I've heard through the grapevine that some people have received their email emails with their results, but some may not have. So if we can get any updates from the county, just in terms of, you know, how long residents should expect to wait before receiving their their results, or if they should call in versus expect to receive an email. Also, Denny Taveras did let me know, because I know that there were some questions where residents who live in French Georgia County but have a Tacoma Park address where they could go and get tested. And she she did say that Rolling Crest Community Center on Sergeant Road does COVID testing, and that's Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So there there is French Georgia County testing that's available. So just want to let folks know about that. I think that's it. Oh, so on Friday, I will be volunteering with the Advanced Community Services Grab Bingo Food Drop Off. So I'm excited. I finally have a day off from work during the day. So I'll be able to to head out on Friday. And so I think that is all I have. All right. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cerci. And I think we actually had one of our residents who had signed up for public comments. So we're gonna take a break from council comments and go back to one public comment. Turn it back over to the city clerk to get that queued up. And as we're waiting, I can answer Councilwoman Cerci's question about the test results. People should have already received their test results by email. Tell them to check their spam. They can also call 311 and get information. And I don't have it right now, but I can get the number for the actual lab and provide that as well. I know a number of residents who were unable to get their results called lab and got them. I actually got my results twice. I got them on Monday and then I got them again today for whatever reason. We did have a debrief with the folks there.
Mayor, the the phone number for the lab?
Yes. Great. Thank you so much. And also, if people are, don't receive their test results, if they can email us and just let them know of our their experiences. Since this is a private lab that the county is working with, it's also important that we provide them with feedback. And they also ask for that as well. And so if someone did participate in the pop-up and have some feedback on that, please just email myself or the deputy city manager who's been working on that. All right, I see. Mr. Conway, are you ready?
Yep.
All right, you're on.
Okay, so I just wanted to say a couple of words. And those are that there are many manifestations of white supremacy in our society. One of them is white police officers murdering black citizens. And another manifestation that is not as often discussed is listening to black voices when they raise new issues with new developments, because they will further gentrify the city, both economically and racially. Please remember that Black Lives Matter and that Black Voices Matter. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Comey. And where do you live in the city? Sorry.
Worthen.
Worthen. Awesome. Thank you so much. I'm glad you could join us this evening. All right. Do we have any other folks that we weren't able to get on for public comments earlier?
Let's try Kay Lovejoy one more time.
All right.
Please.
Are you here? Kay? Yeah. I hear something. No.
No, I don't hear him. All right.
I'm so sorry.
Okay, thank you for trying. Let's go to Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. First off, I want to thank the residents that spoke tonight. The issue with Tacoma Junction Development, my position has not changed. I am concerned, like many that did speak before us, that in the age of COVID-19, civil unrest, Black Lives Matter, why we as a council are not paying more attention to the voices that we have heard. I think that we should put a pause on this project. I think we should look at the possibility of making one of our council priorities, affordable housing, a reality on that site. We should consider whether or not the financing is in place that for the proposed development to go forward, if that's even going to happen. And we need to really talk to some experts and see if office and retail are viable. I don't know if if that is true, especially with a project this size. I I'm disappointed that we're not more nimble, council this size, and we are not looking at additional options. I want to personally thank Diane Kirin for her comments regarding the Co-op. I know the Co-op has worked with Small Things Matter. And that is an organization that has served many residents in Ward Five. They have provided very great.
Hey. You caught me. You tried to FaceTime me anyway. Interfered with my meeting anyway. So, yeah.
Daryl, you're on the you're on the call.
So I would like to thank Small Things Matter, thank the Co-op. They have really stepped up during this time COVID-19. Everything that we're doing, we should reexamine and reconsider if we are providing the residents, especially those most in need, the services that they desperately are in need of today. I want to thank everybody that came out to or logged on to MML as a virtual conference. I think it went very well. I was had the pleasure and honor to moderate a couple of panels, one on the census and one on how to help businesses and community residents during the pandemic. I think it was excellent. We even had a representative from the census on the line with us. So please, I hope my colleagues think about during our recess, how we can change this project or stop it altogether. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Sorry, I just had to unmute myself. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I just had two things I wanted to talk about. One, briefly, it's coming Tuesday, the 7th at 7:00 p.m. I'm hosting another Ward One Virtual Community Discussion. Any topics are welcome. This is sort of a replacement for the kind of office hours approach that I've done in the past when it was easier for people to circulate around. And I will be sending out separately prior to that Tuesday of next week. I'll be sending out prior to that, the credentials on Zoom for people who would like to be part of the meeting. So I hope we'll see a good crowd there. And it's anything from deduction to the library to police reform, whatever else people want to talk about, certainly fine. And then, secondly, I did want to just say a few words about the Junction project. And I appreciate the fact that a lot of people took the time to to speak. And there was a good representation from Ward One, which which I also appreciate very much. Speaking as somebody who voted against the site plan and is opposed to the current form of the project, I don't think that we have to take action here in the month of July. My colleague, Councilmember Smith, said that we could use the August recess to think about ways to reevaluate it. And I'm open to that. But I think there's a lot of uncertain pieces that I think it would be preferable for us to understand and know more about, including the state highway component, what the next submission from NDC will look like. And I think if it really appeared, which it doesn't to me, if it really appeared that the county planning board was imminently going to vote on it, absolutely. And as I sent around a message a little before this meeting, I think I probably sent it around, sent it around near 7:00 p.m. So I understand that folks, in particular those who maybe were participating in the meeting, wouldn't have had an opportunity to see that. Maybe you can look at it later. But as someone who did vote no on the site plan, I'm committed to ensuring that the city council will have adequate opportunity prior to the final planning board vote to weigh in, to offer our opinion to take, to say what we think about and vote on. And it's certainly something to watch closely, the schedule. But as I say, based on everything I'm hearing now, the schedule is not imminent. And there are these key elements that are still unclear. And in particular, those relate to state highway, both on the intersection itself and on some sort of final document from the visioning study. So it's certainly something to watch carefully. Are we doing that? And I appreciate my colleagues' comments about reevaluating and the comments from residents where I come down on the question at the moment, just purely in terms of the schedule, is that we don't have the need to have a work session in this month and in the remaining three, four meetings that we have in July. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Kovar. Councilman Dibala.
Yeah. Hi, hi, everybody. Couple of things. I I also participated in the MML conference and I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Councilmember Smith, for all the work you did to put that together with your team. The mail-in elections was interesting, for sure. Couple of questions for, just a couple of things to highlight, following up on on things people raised already. And just a note that I am going to be having office hours, quote, community discussions also later in July. I'll be putting the dates out over the weekend. And this weekend, I'll be walking around a lot. If anybody in Ward Two wants to talk to me, I should be out and about, especially on the Fourth of July, because I just can't sit still otherwise on a holiday like that. Which brings me to one of my, one of my questions, which is, I understand a number of block parties, street closings have been approved for block parties. Are you still considering any that might come in tomorrow, or are we done?
I might consider them. I'm sorry. Manager, yeah. Right. We really, we really do usually need more time. I recognize we're in a time of transition. So I, you know, we might be able to be to be helpful on this, but but we usually need more time because we have to make arrangements for barricades and that kind of thing. Right. Okay. And the library survey, please say again where one can find it and when the comments are due, because it's coming up pretty quick. I don't have it in front of me. I will send that out to everybody. Okay, so just the deadline, I think, is July 5th, which is Sunday. Sunday. Yeah. As soon as people can get that in, the better. Absolutely. Because it's it comes before council very shortly. Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Cost.
Thank you. Just a couple of quick items, since I know we still have a long agenda and we're going to get to a big discussion on trees in a little bit. So first of all, I just wanted to thank everyone who came out tonight for public comments. I'm just encouraged in an ongoing way at how much public participation we've been able to have at our virtual meetings. We really appreciate everyone coming and sharing your thoughts. And I think it's great to to be looking at things critically at this moment and reexamining things, and particularly the increased emphasis on racial equity. So I'm looking forward to our future discussions on this and opportunities as well. I also want to thank MML and Councilmember Smith for a great conference. It was also, you know, we also did this virtually and I had a great opportunity to attend a number of sessions that were really engaging and interesting, including one on community engagement processes. There was a really great kind of roundtable, I don't know if roundtable is the right discussion, just sort of free-form opportunity for people from all over the state to discuss issues, including racial equity and police reform. And that was a really excellent session as well. Unfortunately, I had a meeting at the time of your session, Councilmember Smith, so I wasn't able to attend those. But I know we all kind of divided up what we what we went to. So I'm looking forward to hearing from everyone in terms of what they were able to to learn and what they got from the conference. And I'm happy to share my thoughts and what I saw as well. And then finally, I have a couple of upcoming office hours as well in July. They will be virtual as as they have been. The first is Thursday, July 16th at 8:00 p.m. And the second is Sunday, July 19th at 8:00 p.m. as well. And I'll be sending out some links and information on how to access those soon. And that's it. Thank you.
It would be helpful if you could tell me what worked and what didn't work with the conference.
Great.
Great. Thank you very much. I just have a couple of things. I just want to again, thank the the city staff for all their assistance and hard work in getting the pop-up testing site in place. It was a huge success. The city manager has more details in her comments that people can read. But we had over 400 people tested. Many families were able to attend. And we were told by the county that normally in other testing sites, they have in a four-hour window, they do about 200 to 250 tests where we were able to do over 400. So we did do a debrief with them today and we're optimistic that we'll be able to provide more testing in the city. And I just want to say thank you again to Delegate Charcutian, who actually spent all four hours volunteering at the testing site that day and has helped us to advocate on behalf of the city for that. So today was a busy day and I'm sure we'll hear more about what took place at the Board of Public Works with some of the suggested cuts that Governor Hogan had. As we've discussed as a council, we found out recently that one of the cuts would impact the city, particularly our businesses impacted by the Purple Line. This is resources that our delegate, Janelle Wilkins, worked very hard to get in place. And unfortunately, it is being considered for cuts. We did learn today that they will take this up again in two weeks. And so I know we just got that news right before our meeting tonight, that we will be talking to our lobbyists and figuring out the best way to advocate for that. So I ask our council members to keep that front of mind. I was also, I was able to be on a call today for the DMO, the Democratic Municipal Officials, had their national policy call today. And there was a representative from the Zero Campaign talking about policing. And so continue to have conversation and gather input on policing and public safety issues. And I hope we're able to come back to that conversation soon. And I know our police chief has been working very hard to answer a lot of questions that we've all had over the last few weeks. The other thing I wanted to do tonight is that one of the things that I usually get to do on the Fourth of July is speak right before the fireworks go off. And this year, since I won't have an opportunity to do that, I wanted to say a few words that I would have said if we were all able to gather for the Fourth this year. So the Fourth of July this year is different. We will not gather for our parade or our fireworks. But sometimes different is good. It gives us time to think and reflect. I want to acknowledge the complicated and problematic I want to acknowledge the complicated and problematic implication of celebrating US history and heritage, a history which began with genocide and continues to perpetrate racism and oppression, and is also a history characterized by the struggle for justice and liberation. In acknowledgement of our full history, together we can reimagine what patriotism truly means. A love for our communities that not only allows, but demands us to question its actions and to protest and speak out. A patriot feels a responsibility to ensure we are holding up the values of our country, of freedom and human rights, and ensure that all people are afforded these rights. A patriot looks forward as well as backwards, and seeks to build and belong to something greater than themselves. So as we go into this Fourth of July weekend, let us remember that patriotism is not about waving a flag, but about fighting injustices wherever we see it. We resist, we protest, and we wear masks because we are patriots. So, thank you all. And with that, I will turn it over to the city manager for her comments.
Thank you very much. It is the time of pandemic, and we continue to work with elements related to COVID-19. I wanted to address first that our playgrounds are going to remain closed for some time. There's, the Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission is opening the Montgomery County playgrounds. They will be opened over the course of about 10 days. We're not yet doing that. We did have some residents tear down our fencing, and we're putting it back up. We are preparing signs so that those signs are very clear for when we do open up the playgrounds. And those signs would share the information that, in English and Spanish, that play equipment is not cleaned or disinfected, that masks should be worn. So any, any child that's two or over needs to wear masks on the playground equipment, that people should maintain a safe distance from each other, and that hands should be washed before and after play. Our Tacoma Park COVID-19 rates remain significantly higher than Montgomery County as a whole. And while we really want to see children at play, it, this is a very difficult time, and our whole community needs to wear masks and do what it takes to, to protect ourselves so that relatively soon, we can all play. We are looking at ways to try to, to get out and, and have some more outdoor activities. Our Rec Department is working on some ways to coordinate that. I don't think it's going to be very long before the playgrounds are opened, but they're, they're not open yet. As the mayor mentioned, the COVID-19 pop-up testing was heavily attended. 431 people in four hours, very well received in terms of cleanliness and organization. The county officials that, from Department of Health and Human Services, were really thrilled. We had a great team on the ground here. Deputy Manager, City Manager Jessica Clark, and a variety of other folks, Grace Wiggins, and our city TV folks, our Recreation Department folks, really helped coordinate the logistics, and it worked well. We did have a debrief today with the Health and Human Services officials about what ways we could improve. And it does look like within about two weeks, we'll be able to have another testing, and we'll, we'll keep making improvements. And so as we get those scheduled, we will let people know. I think the most important thing is that we keep wearing masks, and then we get into a good testing routine.
Ms. Lodo, could I ask a question relating to that? This is a small question, but it was something that I was asked by a resident. I don't know if you had a chance to find out about it in the debrief, but the question related to, I was told, and I wasn't there, so those who work can correct me, but that they weren't checking people's temperature when they came in. I don't know enough about it to know if that's, fits in with the normal protocol or not, but I'm just curious about that. And if the answer's not available now, it's fine, but I just wanted to make sure.
So they're, considering that, we discussed it today on the, on the debrief call. You know, this is for residents who aren't having symptoms. And there's a good number of residents, a good number of people who may have COVID-19 that don't have a fever. So there's a certain amount of, you know, it slows down the process, and it, it may not share that information, but it is something that they're looking at.
I'm not advocating for as much as just curious.
Yeah. So it was a good debrief today. We went through a lot of these different items and, and several things that different residents raised with us, such as that, and some of the questions about the call center were raised on this, on the call. One of the things that was very positive about the the testing site was that there were people that spoke different languages, and including American Sign Language, and that was very helpful for the residents that went through. Switching now to the impact of COVID-19 in our businesses, we're trying so much to help them. And so we have a Tacoma Park Healthy Business Initiative that's just getting off the ground by our Economic Development Division of one and an intern. It's how it's our small group. So we're launching the Tacoma Park Healthy Business Initiative, and it has four components. We'll have outdoor seating and hand sanitizing stations placed at various places around the city where, where there is some gathering, such as the Tacoma Streetery and areas in the crossroads and on Flower Avenue. We have a public health signage package to be provided to businesses that receive clients and customers. The little stickers on the floor that help know where to stand, signs that say face masks required, all with Tacoma Park colors and insignia. So it's clear that this is part of a concerted effort to have safe retail stores and safe environment for our residents and business owners. We also are coordinating opportunities for businesses to be cleaned if they have owners or employees testing positive for COVID-19, so special arrangements for that. And then a healthy business grant program related specifically to the changes that businesses have to go through to open in a time of pandemic. And so we're expecting that our Healthy Business Initiative will launch next week. And the delivery of the signage, the hand sanitizing stations, et cetera, are expected in three to four weeks. So really hard work, doing a lot of outreach, but we have some great, some great services that I think really are far and above some of the other jurisdictions in terms of how to help businesses. I'll note our city building, city buildings are still close to the public. We do have a few more staff reporting on, on Monday, including the Neighborhood Services Team. That also includes parking enforcement and that kind of thing. So we're kind of moving into some normalcy for anything that has to do with the court system, so that people are able to get the reports and things that they need with, with some staff in our building. We are alternating some staff and doing some different kind of cross-training while those staff often are working from home. Our Tacoma Park Library Books to Go begins on Monday. We'll be sending out, and it's, it'll be in the newsletter, the email address to reserve your books to have pickup. And so we're excited that that's actually coming to be. I think it's, we're trying it in one version, and we may tweak it as we see how it goes. And sometimes it'll be different depending on the weather. So we're going to make sure that it's as friendly as possible for people to get the books that they need. If you still have books checked out, you won't be able to check books out. So please return any books that you have. And we've had a couple residents ask us questions about some their status of some various things. I did mention the update on the schedule of Tacoma Junction redevelopment plan. I do want to reemphasize that the process on the, on the Tacoma Junction plan, that the development review process is consistent with the memorandum of understanding that the city has with the planning board. So it's not something that normally the planning board can just go ahead and not, and not include the city council, because that's part of the memorandum of, of understanding that we have with, on how to do development review. There's been some questions. There's an update on the canine incident where a woman was bit by one of our canine Tacoma Park police dogs in December 2018. And I, I did tell some residents that I would share an update on that information. There'll be more information to come, I think, in the near future. But this is about the incident again in December 2018, when a Tacoma Park Police K9 bit a woman passerby just inside Washington DC, when the Tacoma Park Police were responding to a call. Investigations that were conducted by Washington DC and Tacoma Park officials found that the incident was an accident. The Tacoma Park Officer, to whom the canine was assigned, did not intend to have the dog bite the woman. Tacoma Park Police immediately transported the woman to medical attention. Investigations showed, however, that some procedures and best practices were not followed, and so disciplinary action was taken. The Tacoma Park Police Officer involved no longer works for Tacoma Park, and the dog is no longer in service to the department. It should be noted that there was no delay on the part of either Washington DC nor Tacoma Park in investigating this case. But these kinds of investigations often require a long period of time, and some aspects of the case are not yet concluded. I'd like to note that in addition to the investigation of the incident, a review of our general orders and procedures regarding canines and the police officers that work with them was undertaken, and policy changes were made or clarified. Other matters regarding the pros and cons of having a canine unit are still to be discussed. And we are evaluating what is appropriate for Tacoma Park. That's part of the ongoing discussions that we've been having with the Police Department and the council and the community in the coming months. And I wanted to respond to a couple of the questions. Councilmember Siemens had a question about the co-op's use of the Tacoma Junction parking lot. That's actually a lease arrangement with NBC. And so the co-op does have use of that lot. Their choice to make it available at no charge to others is their choice. And on the cell towers at Park Ritchie, the Tower Committee had heard the, the request to put different antenna on cell towers at the Park Ritchie. That request, I think, went on for about an hour. The discussion went on for a long time today. I'm sorry, I don't know the exact amount of time. But the, the cell towers were approved because they met all the requirements of the county. If somebody had a question, I think if there's an issue about what those requirements are, that's a different discussion. There were no comments on the request to put cell towers on the Hampshire Towers, I believe, or Tacoma Overlook Building on New Hampshire Avenue. And we can get, as, we'll be able to get some more definitive information about the decision on the Park Ritchie Towers. That was earlier this, earlier today, so we don't have that in writing yet. We'll get that out to the council. I think, I think that's all. Is there anything else?
I'm not seeing any hands raised, so thank you.
Thank you.
We will now move on to our voting session. The first item is a single reading ordinance awarding the FY21 community grants. As we heard last week from the great presentation we had from our city staff and our Grants Committee, our Grants Review Committee, they are suggesting and recommending to us 10 organizations that will receive grants this year. The grants range from $5,000 to $10,000. People can see the list of the grantees on the city website. I don't know if there are any outstanding questions on this, but would someone like to move the resolution? Councilwoman Dibala, move. Do I have a second? All right, I need to go in. Have a second. Councilwoman Circe, seconds. Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, just to note that it's an ordinance, not a resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry. And it's a one reading ordinance, so is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other, oh, wait, I do have.
Yeah, I have a quick comment.
Around my computer.
Just briefly, I wanted to say thank you to the, to the committee and to staff and everyone for, for your work on this. I do have to abstain from voting on this because I have, the nonprofit that I work for has a relationship with one of the applicants, but I very much appreciate all the work that's been done on this.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so it's a single reading ordinance. Councilwoman Kostic is abstaining. Will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar?
Aye.
Councilmember Dibala?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Aye.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. Wonderful. Awesome. All right, then we will, that passes. And our second voting item, and I see that our city attorney has joined us. Our next item is an emergency ordinance suspending portions of the city code related to the postings of signs. I'm actually, to make sure I don't misspeak on anything, I'm going to turn over the city attorney and the city manager to, to talk about this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The emergency ordinance regarding the suspension of the sign ordinance is designed to continue the suspension that was initially put in place by the city manager in early June. The portions of the city code that would be suspended are 11.04060, which would be primarily, which relates to private signs, and 11.24.020, which relates to lampposts. The ordinance is designed to balance the need for expression with existing limitations on gathering, gatherings, and the potential or the anticipation that those, that those restrictions on gathering will continue for some time. The ordinance does not permit signs that cause damage to property. And as drafted, the ordinance expires the end of June next year, or 30 days after the expiration of the state of emergency, which is, whichever is later. Of course, the mayor and council always have the opportunity to rescind, modify, extend, or otherwise address the emergency uncodified ordinance. That is a brief summary of what the ordinance is designed to accomplish.
Thank you so much for that summary. And did the city manager have anything you wanted to add at this point?
I think the only thing that I'd like to note is that this is more clear about the, the properties, that this science cannot damage property. So this means that there's not graffiti on buildings and that kind of thing, that that does not count as, as the signs that are referred to in this document.
That is correct.
I would also like to note, there was a question by one council member about the status of Pepco polls and, and utility boxes and that kind of thing, and state highway right-of-way. Particularly with Pepco polls, those are, that's private property, and Pepco prohibits posting signs on, on those poles. The city does not necessarily enforce removing the signs from those poles. And I will say that there was a question about could signs be posted in state highway right-of-way? They're not normally permitted. There is some, there's always confusion about who is kind of in control of state highway right-of-way. So I will just say that those are areas that, that remain in some respects a little bit vague as we go through this. But this, as the city attorney mentioned, essentially continues the, the relaxation of the posting of signs in the right-of-way in Tacoma Park. And I'm, that's happy to turn that over to you then.
Great. Thank you. Before I ask someone if they would like to move the ordinance, is there any other questions for the city attorney on this? Councilman, Councilmember Kovar.
Sorry, my, my cursor's not working, so I have to unmute myself. Thank you for the explanation. Just a couple of questions. First, for the city manager or the city attorney, I suppose, on the state highway and telecom poll question. It's my impression that in the past, our staff have, at least at times, enforced that prohibition. So during the time, if we approve this one, it's in effect for up to the next year. Would, are we saying that our staff will not enforce anything connected to signs on telecom poles?
I, it's, it's a little bit difficult for me to say. If somebody does, if someone removes those signs, I mean, I think it could be anybody. I mean, I think it could be anybody. It doesn't have to be a city staff person. But I think the intention that I'm hearing from the council is that we not do much enforcement. So I that's that's my guess that that's how we would do that.
I mean, my intention, for what it's worth, is that we would allow those. But that does raise two other questions, and maybe this is more for the city attorney to answer. So other than the graffiti and so on. Are there any restrictions? I mean, could somebody say, you know, we're meeting at 7:30 tonight in front of Councilmember Kovar's house to throw a brick through his window? I mean, is something as specifically sort of inciting? Is that still prohibited or is even that allowed under this? I don't mean that specifically. I'm cool with my window and so on, but.
So to respond in two ways. One, the to the extent that signs placed in the right of way create a, and I'll just state it generally, a safety issue in in terms of traffic or sightlines or something like that, those of course can be addressed. But to answer your question regarding what I'll refer to as insightful speech or hate speech. The city cannot be in a position of regulating content of speech.
And that even implies applies to inciting incitement toward action would be illegal, is that?
Well, you know, in there's there's got to be a line somewhere. And and if you start to get into something that could potentially go into criminal activity, that that is something that we'd have to defer, we'd refer to the Police Department, and they would address according to their procedures. But in terms of regulating the content of speech, the city cannot do that.
Thank you.
If I can follow up, though, I think one question that is is a good question is if something is posted in the right of way and somebody else doesn't like it, can they take it down? I mean, I think this is directed towards the city's actions, but if is there something that says, you know, I'm just curious about. We do we do we enforce keeping them up if they're if they're up by?
Well, the existing ordinance has within it, and I guess we're suspending it, but the existing ordinance has within it something that says it's not a violation if an individual takes down a sign that's otherwise been approved to be that's in violation of of the rules. I don't know where that leaves it.
Is there is that question posed to me, Ms. Lalo? Yes. I think that the the city is going to be in a very difficult position if it starts to enforce what private citizens are doing in this context, and I would not recommend that. Obviously, there could be a situation in which something escalates in which the city would have to get involved for reasons that are not necessarily related to the signs, but they result in conduct that arises out of any issues related to the sign. But but again, there are other laws that address that type of conduct that would be unrelated to the signs. For example, if two people were to get into a physical encounter over a sign, then that obviously becomes a police issue.
And the last one, and the last thing, I guess, is election signs, since this will now be in effect through the election. Is there any on posting of signs supporting certain candidate? Any candidate?
Again, again, there's no distinction on content of the signs.
Thank you.
And I think just to underscore the question, those questions and the difficulty is why we took this up a few months ago. And I understand on the face of it, it may seem like a a simple issue, but once we start to get into it, there are a lot of different permutations that make this not so straightforward. Councilwoman Dabala.
There we go. Thank you. Just a couple of questions about the, thank you for bringing this forward to us. Couple of questions about the proposal and a couple of questions about the existing sign ordinance that folks have asked me. So on this current proposal on the suspension we have now, I had similar questions about the utility polls, about the about the content of speech. So I want to just repeat to make sure I've got this right, that it that that free speech is free speech, whether you like what it says or not, and that all signs allowed is all signs allowed.
Yes, ma'am.
I got that right. Okay. And what we have now, it I have a question about. We regulate on the size and location, but also prohibit commercial activity, commercial signs with some exceptions, and that's content which is not recommended these days. But for what we have now is opinion, are opinion signs, political, for lack of a better word, signs considered commercial?
Doesn't matter. They're all signs, and we don't you don't you do not divide by by content. That's part of the problem with our existing ordinance that had some reference to commercial. It doesn't matter. So we can have a whole lot of commercial signs out there that we are not able to regulate. Similarly, you can have a lot of political signs out there that we're not able to regulate.
So you, okay, I guess I didn't realize that your current policy before the suspension was that you couldn't regulate the sign ordinance we have now. Maybe that's not what you're saying.
Well, the reason that we took up the sign ordinance
Right.
prior to this is because our ordinance is outdated, and there have been changes. And so we needed to look at it to update.
So that it would be constitutional.
Right.
Right. I was just clarifying what the outdated ordinance allows and doesn't allow.
I'll need to get back to you on some of that, but that doesn't apply right now, so.
Okay, and then my last question is, could you just please review for us the reasons for the proposed end date? Either the attorney or the city manager. I understand the 30 days. I'm a little less clear on your thinking on the June.
I didn't come up. I didn't. I didn't have anything to do with the I had nothing to do with the date.
That's me. I'll take it. The mayor, I'll take that one. I requested the so this ordinance was drafted at my request for the city attorney. And I asked that we have a date and we could discuss this that as flexible. But given where we are with COVID-19 and the upcoming elections, I wanted to be very conscious that we had a policy in place that did not change or wasn't confusing right before our elections. And so I wanted something beyond that. And then thinking that there would be a new council in place and when we may be able to take up a sign, the sign ordinance again and get it in place as you work your way out. I think this was one of the recommendations to look at. You know, having this in place until next year.
Okay, thanks. That was my last question is what was your best guess about when we might be able to return to the discussion about the the outdated ordinance we now have? Thank you.
Great. All right. Seeing no other questions. I Councilwoman Circe. Almost got.
To pull the trigger. So I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I can get walk through this like I'm two. So what we're talking about now is to suspend our outdated sign ordinance, which allowed for discretion in terms of sign removal in place. Am I wrong? Tell me, tell me.
It mostly did not allow for discretion. There were some references to some issues related to commercial or whatever that that were confusing, but it mostly did not allow for discretion.
So basically, if you put a sign up in the public right of way, we have the ability to take it down.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. And and what we're talking about here is that we are temporarily suspending that ordinance to create the ability for people to post signage that we would not enforce. We are not using our, you know, we're not enforcing. So we're not enforcing in terms of content. We're not enforcing in terms of, you know, city agreeance. The only thing that we are looking for in terms of these signs is whether or not they block or obstruct or interfere with traffic in any way.
So there's that, there's or if they're damaging something that is placed on, it's like some of the really sticky adhesive stuff, that kind of thing. Those just those things that would damn, you know, would either inhibit the sightline for safe passage and pedestrians access on the sidewalks or something, a sign that damaged a building.
Okay. And then in terms of, I think it's a lot easier for folks to think about polls and not so much those yard signs, right? Because we're entering into election season. So again, because we're not regulating in any way content. Before it was just if it was in the public right of way, we have the ability to to remove it. So for like yard signs and stakes that people may put in the right of way, does this ordinance basically say that we are not removing those?
Correct. We're not. It's they're they're legal.
Okay. Okay. All right, that 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 addresses. And so it's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm mentally processing. I'm mentally processing. So in terms of, and I read this, and I was like, oh, this sounds okay. And now I'm like mentally thinking through it. So we're talking about doing this for a year, right? Or until January?
Or or. It's for a year or until the council acts before then?
Okay, so the council would have to come back and then undo this and still amend our new our sign ordinance. Okay. All right. And then in terms of the COVID pandemic, or 30 days after the state of emergency. So is that, that's not when we're entering into the phases, but it's when we're completely done with COVID, right? Is that how we're still defining that?
When the governor acts.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But it's whichever is later. So if the if the pandemic is lasting for the next two years, then this presumably could last longer than than next Jan, next June.
Correct.
Okay, so. I do think a year is a long time.
It doesn't have to be a year, but if we if we put a date sooner and the council doesn't act, we may not be able to give enough public notice that then the sign ordinance would go back into effect. And we're putting, then we may be in this limbo place where the city staff doesn't know, are they supposed to be enforcing something that's on our books? And the public doesn't know what the actual rules are. So it's not that, I mean, we could pick another date, but if you look at when the elections are, a new city council coming on board that may then take up this issue, given all the other issues I already know are on the plate of the city attorney for the next at least six to eight months. My concern and why, you know, we could say June of next year, but my concern is I just didn't want to leave it for a future city council. And to have put the put the city staff in a position to have something on the books that they're supposed to be doing and having confusion. Because I think this sign ordinance has caused a lot of confusion in the past and unfortunately put our city staff in, you know, not such great positions, put residents in a lot of like places where they're not understanding what is like allowable and not allowable. So.
Yeah, I think I guess for me, the biggest thing is, you know, I I agree that it's confusing. I think it's important as a result of COVID to provide alternatives and space for people to express their views. But I am cognizant of what the the looks of things will be after the election. And I am concerned. Although people are great at putting signs out, they're not very good about picking them up. And so if if we are not at least kind of examining post-election or the next council, and I don't know if this would be something for the city manager or what we would need to do in in this ordinance to to encourage the council. And it says that the council can rescind, modify this ordinance at any time. So I guess that's there. But and and maybe we just flag it for a future council, like after the election.
And this is on the city attorney's list of action items. So each month when we review the work the city attorney is doing, this is on that list. So whether or not it's this council or the next council, it's a work item for the city attorney. And so will that will be the, I think, that will be a good reminder at least each month that this is an item the city attorney's office is working on. So I that I don't know, Councilwoman Circe, if that addresses your concerns to make sure that doesn't just like, I hear what you're saying, like, just kind of fall through the cracks and everybody forgets about it.
Falling through the cracks. And then after the election, we have all of these political signs in addition to whatever other signs everywhere. Or just not picking them up. And so it and and again, I appreciate, you know, providing opportunities for for folks to express. But I am also concerned about, you know, making sure that it doesn't become blightful. So I do just want to make sure I'm cool with us suspending it, but I want to make sure that we're not, that the future council revisits the issue, particularly when we know it could be problematic post-election. So yeah, if the city, if the city attorney can make sure that it's it's on his list and the council is reminded, particularly and it could be this council, I don't know, after the election, whether or not it's something to revisit, I would encourage us to do so. And that would be that limbo time when new folks haven't come in just yet, but old folks are on their way out.
And actually, I could add, actually, that's a good point. I can ask also, can the city clerk add this to the kind of like a long-term agenda item list that we have? Because that's I think Councilwoman Circe, that's another way that we could raise this and whenever. Because the new city council could get sworn in and decide that they want to get rid of this. And just the sign ordinance go back in place. So you're, yeah, you're exactly right. So I'll ask the city clerk to add that to the to the list. So not only do we have like a double check, we have the city attorney's list, and we also have the running agenda list.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to rock and roll and vote on this. Would someone like to move the ordinance? Councilmember Kovar, Councilmember Smith, I heard you, and then Councilmember Kovar second. Any other questions or thoughts? Seeing none, I will ask the city clerk to, oh, Councilwoman Dabala, did you have a question?
Yeah, I I I'm I'm still struggling with with June. I understand why. I understand all of what you're saying, but I'm still I'm still struggling with June, too. And I'm wondering if there is room to make an amendment, if there's any taste for an amendment, if I were to make it. Does anybody else have anything to say? Besides Councilmember Circe about the June date and the mayor?
Well, I think it would be simpler if you could do, since since we, since we moved the ordinance, if you'd like to move an amendment, you propose a another to change in another time.
Okay, I would. Do I do that now?
Yes, please.
Yes, I propose that we change the date from June 2021 to January 2021. And again, whichever is later, if the if the state of emergency is continuing at that point, 30 days after that expires or January 2021, whichever is later.
And you want January 1st?
I thought it said 30th. In the.
Yeah, it does say June. So June, so January 30th.
Yeah.
This, is there a second to that? Amendment? I'm not seeing a second. Councilwoman Circe seconds.
I was gonna say, they would answer it right there, wouldn't it?
All right, January 30th.
You'd want you'd want January 31st.
Yeah, I think, 31st, 2021. All right, any comments on that?
My concern with January 31st is once there's a new council in November, December, we're going to be on recess. I don't know if there would be enough time for a new council to absorb this issue, uh, just maybe, you know, 45 days being on the job.
I may be dreaming, but I feel to some degree that this group has done a fair amount of this work, has made a lot of progress. I thought we actually were pretty close to agreement, and I wonder if there is any way that we could tackle it in September.
We are not, there isn't, there's no, I'm going to say right now, looking at the agenda and looking at the city attorney, I can promise you, there is no way this is coming back to us, given the workload we have in front of us. It just, it, it is a very complicated issue. We are not close on this, on the ordinance. We have, when we come back in September, on September 16th, we do, the, the election is November 3rd. We have the few meetings in September and the month of October. Given what this council has to work on, and that over the next four meetings after tonight, and what we need to work on in the fall, I can tell you right now, this is not coming to our agenda in the fall. Pass it, so. And I would agree with Councilmember Smith. I think this is, it, it is a very complicated issue. I think it's taken this council a while to like figure out all the ins and outs of it. And I would be concerned about having a new council, and especially since we'll hear about elections in a moment. You know, it's most likely going to mail. It means a new council will not be sworn in as soon as we have been in prior years in councils. So then you got Thanksgiving and then you got December, and so I, in my mind, I'm thinking a new council may not actually take really start meeting until January. And so thinking about that, and all you have to do as a new council member, I just, you know, I'm not sure it's realistic to do that. So now again, there's nothing to say if we left the date the same. If a new, if by chance we were able to tackle the, the ordinance and a new council could do that, you know, that's something that, this, the way the ordinance is currently written does not preclude that. So, um, anyone else, Councilwoman Kostic, did you ever be handed up, or did I?
I did briefly. I just wanted to share a similar concern that, that the mayor and Councilmember Smith raised, just with regard to timing. I think it is going to be really tough to look at, being ready to make any change by the end of, end of January. And it seems like, it often seems like we can move faster on things, but just thinking through the way that things, the, the reality of how slowly it seems like it, it often takes. And the fact that we end up having discussions until midnight quite frequently, I just, I don't know that it's, that it's going to be possible. But I do really appreciate the concerns that have been raised about it.
Okay, um, let's see, uh, let's see, I guess we'll do a vote on the amendment. The amendment moved by Councilwoman Dibala and seconded by Councilwoman Circe is to change the date to January 31st, 2021. Will the clerk, uh, call the vote on the amendment?
Councilmember Kovar?
No.
Councilmember Dibala?
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic?
No.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hey.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah.
Councilmember Circe?
We can't hear you.
We cannot.
I have to vote against what I seconded. I completely forgot about the mail-in election.
All right. Is that, that's a no then?
That's a no.
Okay. Mayor Stewart?
No. All right, all right, now we gotta vote for it. Okay, so now we have the vote on the actual ordinance. Little clerk called the vote on the order.
All right, Councilmember Kovar?
Hi.
Councilmember Dibala?
Hi.
Councilmember Kostic?
Hi.
Councilmember Siemens?
Hi.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Circe?
Hi.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes. All right, thank you. And I just want to thank the city attorney for doing this one pretty quickly, like a lot of things these days. All right, that takes care of our voting session. We'll now move to our work sessions. The first item is a check-in on our city elections. Let me turn this over to the city clerk.
Yes, we, we do have Arthur David Olson with us tonight as well. I thought I would again introduce the subject, and then if you have questions, you could, he or I could answer them. I think Brian Ernst was not able to join us this evening. To refresh the public and the council as to where we are with election planning, due to concerns for the health of voters and election workers, the Board of Elections and staff are planning for a vote-by-mail election where ballots would be mailed to all voters of the city. While we hope and anticipate that most ballots will be mailed or dropped off, some voters will need to vote in person. So this would include voters who need to use a ballot marking device, voters who do not receive a ballot in the mail or misplace the ballot, and voters who are not yet registered. For those purposes, we anticipate opening at least one location on Election Day for people to stop in and vote. To effectively conduct a vote-by-mail election, several amendments to the city code and charter will be needed. They are relatively minor amendments. Next week, next week, the council will discuss at its work session the proposed charter amendments, and that is posted on the website now. There's a public hearing on the proposed charter amendment scheduled for July 15th at 7:30 PM. So we have that coming up. At the last meeting, the council raised a number of really good questions that the board has not had a chance to fully, has not met since then, but I've spoken with the chair and vice chair about several of the things that were raised. And we encourage the council to continue to raise questions and, and bring up concerns about this. And we encourage the public to contact me or contact anyone on the Board of Elections also to keep us, so that we can hear about concerns or questions, so that it will help with the planning. So among the questions were, what will the final date available? What will be the final date to register in order to receive a ballot by mail? We don't have an answer for that yet. It will be worked out over the next month or two, so we will have an answer. But right now, it will depend on what Montgomery County is doing, what our vendor does, and we will have that as part of the schedule, but we don't have that answer now. A question was asked about the nominating caucus and whether it would be virtual, and we will certainly plan to have a virtual caucus if that's needed. And these days, everything is virtual, but, so we will be planning for that if necessary. How would preregistration of write-ins work since they're normally posted in, in the polling place? So part of the charter amendment includes a, a minor, a change to how potential writing candidates would preregister and what would be done with their names. And we have a new timeline to propose for that. As for drop-off boxes, we would definitely have a drop-off box at the community center. Whether we would be able to have other permanent 24/7 drop-off boxes is not clear at this point, but we will try to make it as easy as possible for people to drop their ballots in an appropriate place.
Could we, sorry, could I interrupt the city clerk?
Yes.
I'm just curious on the drop-off boxes, would there be a reason we couldn't have one like at the rec center on New Hampshire?
Uh, the, it's just cost and availability. That's the only reason. So we will certainly look into that and we'll keep you informed about the options for that.
Okay, great. Councilwoman Circe, I saw your hand up. I don't know if you were asking the same question.
Right. Yeah, we don't want to make everybody come to the community center if, if we can avoid that. If, if worse comes to worse.
That'll be important too, because of the number of multifamily buildings that's near the rec center. So if there, and this was something that was noted in the cover sheet, if there is concern that perhaps residents who live in multifamily buildings might be less inclined to actually mail off their ballots, we, you know, having something at the rec center might help to address that, because they could just walk it over. I also want to encourage us to try to work with property managers. So if there is a mail drop-off box in some of these multifamily buildings, like in the mailrooms, that residents understand that they can leave their ballot, you know, that we would get their ballots if they put them in the drop boxes in their respective buildings. So that, that might be a few things that we might want to consider for residents that are, that live in multifamily buildings.
Sure, good points. Let's talk more about that as we continue planning. Let's see. And you had mentioned, and of course, all the council is concerned that we do a, a robust outreach campaign to let voters know about the election and how they're able to vote this year. We will do that. Irma and I are meeting monthly, weekly with Donna to, to, to do the planning and, and the Board of Elections. Donna attends Board of Elections meetings, and she, she is on top of it. So, so we will have a good plan for you. It is being developed and, and we will let you know what it's going to cost.
Are you going to send us the bill?
We'll send seven bills.
Thank you. I just want to say Donna sent around to folks the new graphic for the elections this year, which looks awesome, and we have it right now in English and Spanish, and I know other languages are coming soon. So, um, thank, tell her thank you for that as well. Great. Any other questions or thoughts as we continue to plan for the elections?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure Arthur David Olson had a chance to speak if he wanted to add anything or, or, or if he has anything to add or say. I didn't mean to take you by surprise. I'm sorry.
I am fine.
He's fine. Okay. And then I heard, so I heard then Councilmember Smith and then Circe, questions?
Ms. Carpenter, did the city attorney give an opinion on swearing in, if we can do that virtually?
He didn't. I haven't asked him, but I also thought I, I really probably need to contact the clerk of the circuit court, who does the swearing in.
Okay.
And see how she's dealing with that, but the city attorney may have a response.
Okay, thank you.
Right now.
I, I think just the first step would be to contact the circuit court clerk and see what the plan is there. And then once we have that plan, I'll opine as to whether it's appropriate or not. All right, thanks.
Great. Councilwoman Circe?
Quick question. Um, has there been, have you all developed a plan around voter registration and outreach? To try to get folks registered sooner rather than later? Because I would imagine that our, our timeline would be shortened, because we would need those addresses in order to mail out the ballots.
That's right. That, that is important. And in fact, what I'm reading is that voter registration is way down from what it typically would be before a presidential election, because the typical voter outreach events are not happening. So that needs to be a really important part of our outreach, to get people to register, to prepare to vote by registering and make sure, making sure their information is correct. It's crucial.
Councilwoman Dibala?
Yeah, on that point, thank you. On that point, for the primary, there was a place you could go to check online whether you were already registered and at what address. And is that something that he is able to do?
For, of course, for voters who are registered with the state, they will be able to continue to do that. They could do that anytime.
I meant folks registered.
For city-only registered voters, I think the best bet at this point will be for them to contact the city clerk's office to confirm their registration. And we will be doing special mailings to that group. To the city-only registrations, because that, it'll be important to find out who, who will be an active voter for this election.
And so if a resident right now wants to check, they check with that state, that state location that was publicized for the primary, if, to see that they are in fact registered for the city. Next question, if somebody wanted tomorrow to request an absentee ballot for the city, would you encourage that? Would you not encourage that? And third question, if somebody wanted to register tomorrow to vote, what would they do?
Right. I'm working through that question, since I'm not at the community center to accept a voter registration right now. People can, I, I would encourage anyone, before we get this put together, I would encourage anyone to contact me, and I will figure out the best way for a person to register to vote. We will have a plan in place, but right now, the best I could say is feel free to call me, and I will find a solution for that voter registration.
And again, if someone registers with the state, then they are registered with the city.
Correct.
So if they wanted to register today and they're eligible to register for the state, with, through the state, you do it that way?
They should do that, absolutely.
Thank you. Just a couple of early birds on board too, what can I say?
And as to absentee ballots, it will be important to, for people who are going to be out of town, we will have a process for people to let us know where their ballots need to be sent, if they should not be sent to their home. So there will indeed be a absentee ballot process, and more will be, will come out on that, more information will come out.
Great. All right. Seeing no other hands or anything. So I think we're done for the moment on the elections. Thank you very much for that update. And I know we will be spending the next four weeks rolling up our sleeves, digging into this. So thank you for that. All right. So now we will turn it over and talk about trees. And I want to first thank my colleagues, Councilmember Kovar, Kostic, and Dibala for all their work on this, as well as our Tree Commission, Committee on the Environment, our city staff, the city attorney, lots of folks have been working very hard to move this forward. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to my colleagues to walk us through first the resolution and then the ordinance. So who gets to go first? Councilwoman Dibala, all right, it's all yours.
Thank you. And is the slideshow available to be pulled up? So what, what we want to do tonight is to walk through first an introduction of where we've been and what we've decided so far, then to talk to, to do some slides on the resolution, and pause there to talk about the resolution, then to go on to the ordinance. And I would also like to thank the Committee on the, the Tree Commission, the Committee on the Environment, my colleagues, and all the residents who filled out the survey, all the residents who have submitted comments and who are still submitting detailed, intelligent, thoughtful comments about the ordinance and some of the provisions in it, and about the focus of the resolution. It's been heartwarming to see how many folks have been engaged in this process. We can always hear from more folks, but, but there's been a lot of, a lot involved in this so far. And thank you for that. So- And thank you for that. So so again, to start off with, with slide number, the second slide, just to remind us why we are here. Next slide. Jesse, who's advancing the slides? Is it me or you? I don't know how I advanced the slides. If someone could please clue me and that would be great.
I apologize. You just need to tell me where you went. What slide I should be on right now. I apologize for that.
No problem.
Bring them back up.
Okay, sorry. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
This was clearly not rehearsed. So so the second slide, please, the one with the tree, just to remind us before that, thank you. To remind us why we're here. This is a graphic from Client Climate Initiative. It just shows the many benefits that a healthy urban forest can provide for us. Climate benefits, air benefits, water benefits, and all the the community benefits that go with that in terms of healthier spaces, more pleasant spaces, and so forth. Next slide, please. So to recap, we, in 2018, this council set priorities to revise the tree ordinance, to set tree canopy goals, and to improve education and outreach to residents. Last spring, we heard the results of a tree canopy assessment by the University of Vermont, which, as someone who commented pointed out, showed 58% tree cover with, and we'll talk about the details in a minute. We did a resident survey. More than 500 people responded. Many of them were quite satisfied with the overall notion of the value of trees and of efforts to protect them. There were a couple of flashpoints that I think we have addressed as we've proceeded over the last year in terms of replanting and replacement requirements, which we'll talk about later tonight. The particularly trees in decline as a hazard as opposed to trees where that are very clearly and truly dead. And some concerns about the process itself in terms of timeframes, clarity, ease of operation, and so forth. We had a public workshop, several work sessions, a few specifically on the ordinance. Next slide, please. And here we are, July of 2020. I think moving into the homestretch with a work session tonight and votes scheduled later in July. So our main topics for tonight, not to focus on what we've already covered, but to say that we want to go go through the tree resolution, which accompanies the ordinance and sets some overarching goals and principles. We want to talk about racial equity and and how that applies to the tree ordinance and the tree program. We want with the ordinance to talk about legislative findings, because they're different, they're quite different from what they were originally in the in the current ordinance, and reports to council, which talks, which used to be the the roles and duties of the urban forest manager. So that's a section that's quite different also. And and again, the big enchilada, tree replacement, tree replanting scheme, and the implications of the one that we tentatively honed in on in February for tree canopy citywide in the long run. Next slide, please. Just a little more detail on our council priorities from 2018. And you'll see some of these themes emerging as we talk tonight. Next slide, please. These are the many topics we discussed in October specifically about the ordinance. I won't go through them line by line. The three of us are prepared to answer questions either tonight or this coming week about how these different specific items got resolved. Next slide, please. But we wanted to hone in tonight on some of the key choices we did make, just to remind us all where we've been. We we heard a lot about could the permit process be easier, simpler, could it be online? And I'm happy to say that staff have have been able to do that to get the tree removal process online. So that's great. We want, we we talked a lot about focusing on the urban forest as a unit and not just individual tree permits. We have talked a great deal about focusing more on native and climate resilient species. We agreed that we wanted to redo the species list, which guides replanting, and there's was a specific plan for how to do that. As far as what triggers a tree assessment to protect a tree that is potentially affected by activities of all sorts. We allowed people, we changed the the rule on branch trimming from 5% to 10% to allow more flexibility for the tree protection. Permit process, again, made some some changes and clarities in terms of process. On tree removals, there was some confusion about the waiver versus the permit process. And if you applied for a waiver, you got rejected. So so we're just one process. You apply for a permit. If if the tree rates low, we'll get to that in a minute, there's there's no replacement requirement. The idea of what is a hazard is a little different from what it was before. And in particular, if a hazard, if if a tree, if a part of a tree is hazardous, it cannot be corrected. That's a broader approach than where we where we were with the current ordinance. We also revised the criteria by which tree removal permits are decided. There were, there was a long list, and we got the Tree Commission and the staff to go over it and revise it. We also have had, took the advice of of staff in the Tree Commission to revise the tree rating chart, which is the first of two steps in determining replacement requirements. So it harvests goes out, looks at the tree, rates it by several categories as to its overall condition and health, which then gives it a score. The score tells you whether what whether you don't need to replace quote waiver category, where there's no replacement requirement, because it needs to come down right now all the way up to it's a healthy tree that needs to come out for some reason, some activity you're doing. If it's allowed to be removed, then that would have a higher level of replanting. So those are some of the things that we've already covered and tentatively decided. Next slide, please. And now we're back to what we want to talk about tonight, which again is the tree resolution. The couple of sections of the ordinance, particularly the tree replanting. And at that point, I'll stop and turn this over to my colleague Peter Kovar. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. I appreciate it. And I'm going to be talking the next few slides about the tree resolution. I will say it's kind of impossible to talk much about the tree resolution without also talking about the tree ordinance and vice versa, because the two are connected. And the distinction between the two, I think, is important to understand. The tree ordinance governs permitting and other actions related to permitting for tree removals and the like. But on an individual tree by tree basis, in most cases affecting individual homeowners, that's the thrust of it. That ordinance has existed for a long time, has changed multiple times over the years. And we'll be talking later in this presentation about further changes that we're recommending there. The resolution is a new concept, and the reason we're doing it is because all the discussions we had about the ordinance made it clear that beyond just how the permitting process works, it's important to have some overall goals and principles and so on, and ways of approaching our urban forests and what we want to do with the forest and how we're going to try to manage it. We haven't really had that in an explicit way before. And one of the things that we wanted to move toward, and the whole council, I think, agreed with this, was moving away from, in effect, managing the forest through simply regulating actions involving individual trees that would still happen through the ordinance. But we also wanted to focus in a more comprehensive way on the overall permit forest, goals for it, canopy, and so on. Now, it's also, to be honest, harder in some ways to create something new than to amend something that already exists, which is which is the which is the ordinance. And so in addition, because some of the things that we're at least contemplating in the tree resolution would have budget implications. At this stage, the resolution serves as an explanation of the principles and goals that we think makes sense as opposed to the nuts and bolts of how it would be done. And I think one of the crucial things we will have to discuss, one of the kind of big issues, is the budget implications, because right now, the urban forest manager position, we don't have one at the moment. We're using a consulting harvest for those for that work. But that position has kind of become a full time permitting job, and the person who has that kind of runs from place to place processing permits. And I think it's important to be able to process the permits, and we're trying to move that toward an online system. But we think it's important, and this is sort of the third leg of the stool. There's the ordinance, there's the resolution, and then there's a lot more on canopy goals and forest goals, and a lot more on outreach, education, and maintenance. But all of those things don't come for free. And so one of the things we'll have to talk about are the budget implications. In the actual resolved clauses of the resolution, there are three main areas. Goals for urban forest, principles that we would like to see govern how the resolution works, and then some implementing actions that we think it makes sense to take. And so I'm going to go through each of those individually. Next slide, please. So these are the urban forest goals that are in the first section of the resolve clause. And you'll see one of them is known at loss of the urban forest canopy. That currently averages out citywide to about 60%, but there are a lot of variations on that within the city. And we can talk about that, and we'll talk about that later when we get into more of the questions about equity. A second one is increasing in biodiversity. And one of the things we saw in particular last year, when a lot of the white oaks were being afflicted by the beetle infestation, was that in certain parts of the city, anyway, maybe there was an excessive number of white oaks. And certainly, one of the things that we've seen, the healthiest forests long term, and I've seen some academic papers on this as well. You want to have a diversity of types of trees. And in the ideal situation, you wouldn't have more than 10% of any one species. And so promoting, finding ways to promote more diversity is certainly something we want to do. Now, the third one has to do with the planning of native and climate adapted species. This is a bit of an area where I think more discussion will happen. Those of you who were listening earlier and heard Liz Kleymar, one of our residents, make a presentation about the importance of native planting. That's something that we can talk about. And so one of the questions is, how strict should the native planning requirement be? There are some who would say that there should be virtually no exceptions. In this draft, we do allow for exceptions relating to other species that may be better adapted to climate change or the climate that we have at any given time. Now, we'll hopefully have a list of acceptable trees that can be adjusted on an annual basis. And we can debate whether, to what extent, that should be limited to native or in other ways more broad. Liz Kleymar, who I mentioned spoke earlier, was calling for very limited exceptions to that. The next bullet point is about increasing tree canopy coverage in neighborhoods and focusing on more equitably distributed tree canopy over time, to the extent feasible. And so to the extent feasible is an important language. We talked a lot about, should we just say, let's increase the tree canopy coverage? Or should we say, to the extent feasible, taking into account budget, climate change, and other factors? That's where we've ended up. I expect that's something we'll want to discuss also. But I think in particular, and this gets to the equity piece, which again, we'll be talking about a bit more shortly, tree canopy coverage is not even across neighborhoods, and that's a challenge for us to try to deal with. And to the extent we can, that it is feasible to increase canopy coverage. We believe that the focus should be in the neighborhoods where there's less. Now, obviously, that can only work if there's actual engagement and consultation with folks who live in those areas. It's not up to me to say whether someone should or shouldn't want trees in the neighborhoods, more trees than they currently have. The tree canopy assessment, the recommendation is 60%. That's the average, and that's been the average over the last several LiDAR reviews. That's relatively robust for this area. Most other areas around here that aren't set aside specifically as forests or reserves, but areas where people live do not have as high as 60%. But we think that in preserving the existing canopy, absolute minimum, residents hold the key. And what that means is that most of the available space in the city where planting could occur is actually on private property. And so one of the things that we do want to explore, both here and in the ordinance, is opportunities for incentivizing planting on private property. And obviously, a key component of all this is to continue getting information, mapping and being able to inventory the trees that we have. Next slide, please. So those were the goals, and then this gets into principles, which is, I suppose, a step down from goals. The important role of urban forest, of urban forest and climate change mitigation, adaptation, resilience. We talked about this a lot, actually, in our climate change plan that we adopted earlier this year. And we want this resolution, and we want the ordinance to mesh well, not only with the climate change framework that we've adopted, but also with our open space plan, our racial equity plan, and the other major planning work that's underway within the city. But there is language in both ordinance and in this resolution that talks about the key role that the urban forest plays in climate change mitigation. Recognizing ecological services provided, trees provide vital services, not only in terms of climate change, but also as areas that host animals, insects, provide benefits to people's lives, to neighborhoods, sheltering, allowing us to be cooler in the summer, and a whole range of services, including mental health. And we want to recognize, we want to recognize that. Trees and tree canopy being community resources as well as a responsibility. This is a key part of the resolution, because the the ordinance is focused on permitting and in some cases punishing. What we want to say is that it isn't just an individual situation. I've got a tree over here in my yard, my neighbor's got one over there in their yard. We want this to be looked at as this is a vital community wide resource. And then that may implicate, as we said earlier, some budgetary considerations. Focusing on addressing inequities in tree planting and coverage, again, I'll get into more details on that in a moment. But we want to try to address that, and it's vital. And this gets into the the next bullet point, that we have resident collaboration, that we have outreach and engagement. So again, it's not up to me, in particular, a white man, to say, in other parts of the city where black people and people of color live, here's what you should do about trees. I don't want to do that, and I don't think people who live in other parts of the city want to hear that from me. What we want to do is conduct a robust outreach and engagement effort to get a better sense for what people would like. And that has to be part of this work. And then I think the the final principle to talk about is that there would be specific proactive steps taken, and that would include things like encouraging more private property planting, encouraging planting instead of fee payment, so we actually get the trees, helping to clarify policies for residents to make donations to the tree fund. So, you know, maybe at the time, at the end of the year, whenever people make contributions. Now, I know it's gotten a little harder to deduct contributions on federal taxes, but some people are able to do it. And even if they don't, why not have annual contribution to the Tacoma Forest Tree Fund be part of your giving? And a lot more on helping residents understand existing tree health and maintenance. I think a lot of us routinely have the plumber come in, or you have a air conditioning system, have have the air conditioning people come in and do a lot of things like that. Getting our cars looked at regularly, but many people don't necessarily think about that in terms of trees. And of course, that's a way to help keep them healthy and have help keep them healthy and have them last longer and be less likely to need to be taken down. Next slide, please. And then we get to some more specific actions that we're recommending in this resolution. Most of these would still need to be implemented specifically or adopted specifically as ordinances or actual votes by, votes by the council to effectuate them, but this is what we're proposing. Continuing to reassess the canopy every three years. We were doing it every five years in consultation with staff. We recommend every three years, but we can, we can adjust that depending on what people think and depending on the cost. Updating the species planning list and planning for periodic review. And so I think in the past, we've had the list. It hasn't always been as accessible as we want it to be. And particularly if we're going to try to encourage the emphasis on native species and make that relatively strict, we want that to be something that people can see. And then I think we also want to review that periodically and have a way for people to say, I'd like to see this particular species be added. I'd like to see that one maybe be dropped. That should be more of a kind of public collaborative process. I noted this earlier, but aligning the urban forest plans and actions with climate, with our climate change initiative, our housing strategic plan, our public space plan, which is still in the works, and our racial equity efforts. And I've talked in the past about having kind of a unified field theory where these four or five major initiatives that are underway for us have to have their interstices appropriately connected. And so I think that's something that we'll want to make sure is done. And that requires ongoing deep focused intensive discussions and consultation in order to make that happen. Assessing public and private programs and target planning efforts to promote robust tree canopy. And so this is partly looking at how effective the existing programs are and then trying to find the ways to expand them. And again, as I noted before, a big part of this is that the the major areas that are quote unquote available for planting, and this is something that emerged from the academic study that we have presented to us in the previous year. It showed that private property was the biggest available area. Now, that might mean 10 feet from my house, and maybe I don't want that, but it could also mean 100 feet away at the back of my house where I might. How do you incentivize people to do that? That's, that's a fundamental question. A pilot project collaborating with a community in area, less or tree covers to increase tree health and cover. So rather than just saying we're concerned in an overall sense about the equitable distribution of trees in the community, we are, and we want to find ways of addressing that, but let's also start up at least one pilot project early in the process where we have a focused collaboration and outreach with the community or neighborhood in area, plus your tree cover and and see if we can come up with, with some more specific early ideas about how to proceed. And again, you know, reaching out to people, they might say we don't want to have trees because they're too expensive, or we don't want to have trees because the cleanup in the fall is bad. Or maybe they produce material that is harmful to people that would hazard. So there's a lot to think through on that, but starting with a pilot project, in addition to looking at the overall effort, I think is important. And then we get to this in the final resolve clause, moving forward as quickly as practical, given the budget and staff capacity. And this is really, in some ways, the, the key component that I think the council as a whole has to discuss. And again, I want to emphasize, and Cindy may have touched on this as well. We, under the open meetings rule, we can't have more than three people working in private on, on the council on policy matters and trying to come up with policies and trying to make decisions. So the three of us in this working group developed what we thought made sense and flowed from the earlier conversations with the full council that. But again, these are just our, the three of us, our best efforts to do that. We recognize that there are some gaps in this and that there's more work to be done, and that a lot of it does require a discussion by the full council. So that's a really quick run through of what's in the resolution, where it came from, why we're doing it. And I think that's the last slide of that section. If I'm correct, let's just look at the next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, we still have to do racial equity, right? My apologies. So on the can, canopy distribution in the city. So if you look at the, if you look at the numbers here in wards four and six, they have 52% and 44% respectively, the other wards, 58 to 68% with an average of around 60. Now, word by word is not the only way to do it, but that's the way that we have it, and so it's worth looking at that. And it is true, and this is the second bullet, neighborhoods with more single-family homes generally have more canopy compared to neighborhoods with more multifamily and commercial properties. There are exceptions to that, but that's true, at least on a neighborhood basis, if not a ward basis. And I think it's really important. This is a really crucial piece of this discussion. I saw a lot of discussion on some of the listservs, and some people were saying, well, you know, in ward six, the reason that it's hard to plant there is because you've got a big roadway like New Hampshire Avenue, or maybe in ward four, you've got a lot of multifamily apartment buildings and a lot of big parking lots. And so some people would say, well, therefore, the argument would go that just emerged naturally that there is less tree cover there. Now, some people, again, may not want tree cover, but I think it's wrong in the United States or America to say that these things just came about naturally. And there's a reason why less well-off people and people of color live in the neighborhoods that they do. And that's in most cases across the country, and it may vary from place to place. And we could look at the specific history to come apart, but in most cases, those concentrations of, of populations of people of color are a result of conscious, specific legal decisions that were made by the federal government, other levels of government, and also business and commercial interests, including banks and financial institutions. So I don't think it's a, the answer to say the reason that there's no, there's lesser tree coverage in some areas is because there's big highways like New Hampshire Avenue or big apartment buildings. That may be a narrow, specific explanation for why in a given area, you can't plant as many trees right there right now. But I think that's a little bit wearing historical blinders to say that it just sort of happened naturally. So we have to really try to, try to address that. And I think people are aware that it's wards four, five and six have the highest percentage of black and brown people in the city, ward five, because it runs along Sligo Creek Parkway, is pretty well-treed, ward four and, ward four and six aren't. National level research, and we can, we can pull these things for people who are interested on tree canopy distribution do show that in areas with fewer trees, and you get hotter temperatures in neighborhoods generally correlated and linked to lower income populations living there, and more people of color and in general, racial inequities in the distribution of trees on public land. And the benefits, I talked about this before, but they're listed here. Property values, of course, also can generally be valued, although some people object to having a lot of trees because they don't want to rig the leaves or deal with a tree potentially falling on their house. But low energy costs, air quality and so on, generally, plus there are some burdens on the other side. I, Cindy may reference, council member DeBau, may reference to the tree survey. And this just indicates that three quarters of the respondents were from wards one, two and three. However, with hundreds and hundreds of people responding, I thought the number was maybe even 900, but definitely over 500. We still did get a reasonable number from, from other wards. Next slide, please. And so some initial proposals that we have in the, in the resolution to, to try to improve equity. Number one, in the ordinance itself and the legislative findings, which we'll be talking about later, we do emphasize the importance of it. In the, in the resolution's goals and principles and actions, we talk about it. We do call for prioritizing planting in neighborhoods with more residents of color and fewer trees. Certainly greater collaboration and listening to residents from, from those areas about their needs and potential next steps. And again, I'm not the one who should be deciding about that. That should be up to, I'm not even the one who should be deciding about what happens in ward one. It's about listening to the residents. We talked about the pilot project already, and I think that's an important thing to, to go forward with. And in general, it would be a focus on encouragement to the extent that, given neighborhoods and residents wanted it to promote both public and private plantings. And so we can do more in terms of planting along streets and parks to some extent. But as I mentioned, the findings of the academic study was that the private area was an important part of it. And that will depend on size of lots and a lot of other things. And we also have talked about using the city's annual bulk buy process and other strategies where you can group together as opposed to having one, one individual person be responsible for trying to buy one tree for themselves. That could be a more expensive way to do it. So maybe there are ways through the city's ability to bring to bear resources in a, in a larger way to make it more affordable than it would otherwise be if individual people were trying to do it on their own. So now I'm going to stop there because I believe the next slide will be about the ordinance. And so we can talk a little bit about the resolution for people who would like to. And, you know, I would say, my mind, and my colleagues can weigh in on this as well, but among the areas that are I, I think especially open to being discussed would be, do we want to set the goal at known at loss with, with the ability to increase it to the extent feasible? And to what extent do we want to emphasize native plannings? Do we want to say native plannings and others that adapted to climate change? Or do we want, as some of the residents had suggested earlier, make those exceptions a lot more narrow? I think some of those are among the most important points that need to be discussed, but obviously, we can discuss any of it. And I hope I didn't go on undue length.
I have just one comment to add, which is that that compared to what you saw in February, this isn't that different. The way in which it is a little different is more attention on the neighborhoods, more attention on suggestions for ways to deal with the inequities by neighborhood. And a little bit more specifics in that third section about the specific actions, just a little more cleaning up in there. So this isn't really too, too substantively different than what you saw in February with those couple of exceptions.
I would say one way in which it is different is that the earlier version talked about only known at loss and didn't talk about to the extent feasible increasing tree canopy coverage. And again, I've heard from a lot of people today who think that that couple of goals doesn't go as far as, as they would want it to. And I do think that's an important thing for us as a council to discuss. Are we, among the reasons why staff and others have argued for known at loss is because we're struggling with the infestations, climate change and budgetary constraints to do much more than keep things where they are. And so one of the things I think for us to think about is in a resolution like this, do we want to say, okay, we'll do that, but we really need to go much higher? Or do we want to say, well, we'll try to go for known at loss just because that's realistic, and we don't want to set a a goal beyond that that we don't think we can reach? That's a, that's a debate. I don't know, I don't know what the best answer is there, but I'd like to at least have on the table the idea that we want to go beyond it. If we go beyond it, I think in particular, and that's what this resolution tries to do, it should be focused on areas that to the extent that they're open, residents are open to it, that have less amount of tree coverage.
You want me to? How do you want to handle this part? Do you all want to take the questions? You want me to moderate, like the?
I think it makes sense for you to moderate and for us to respond to people because it's hard to do both at the same time.
I do it every week, I know. Councilwoman C R C.
Thank you so much, colleagues, for doing all of this work, which, I mean, I don't know how you did it. But one thing that I do want to encourage us to keep in mind when we're talking about race equity is how the fact that we see an inequitable distribution of trees in our community could also be a direct reflection of some of the, some of the systems that we have in place, right? So for example, in ward six, most of our tree plantings most recently happened in conjunction with sidewalk projects. So if you have a number of residents in, or a number of neighborhoods in wards four, five and six that don't have sidewalks, and that might be a good driver for encouraging things like tree plantings and kind of getting everyone on board with having trees planted in the right of way. That's, that's something that's important to keep in mind. Like, we may actually have processes in place that creates these types of inequities. So it's not, I, I don't want us to be in the situation where it is, to some degree, not accusatory, but kind of just assuming that people who live in these communities don't want tree-lined sidewalk streets, right? They do. It's just they haven't had them, and they don't know the process for petitioning for those types of things, right? So I would encourage us to think about some of the other processes that maybe we have in place, as well as maybe looking and exploring and working with staff to explore some other inequities that we may have that correlate with our ability to plant trees. Because I will say, we had the Big Glen Side project, we were able to plant a ton of trees there. We had the Wildwood project, we were able to plant trees down all of Wildwood. We had the Erskine Sidewalk Project, we were able to plant trees there. So, so those are some things that we need to make sure that we're, we're working on and keeping in mind that in many cases, that the goal is to have more trees planted in, on private property, that it might include looking at things like our sidewalk projects and how we can combine them and how we can address inequalities there as well. Another thing that I think is important to keep in mind is that we don't lump all single-family home, all single-family people who live in single-family homes as single-family homeowners. We ran into a number of people who are renting single-family properties, and therefore, they have no say-so in whether or not a tree is planted on that property. So while I think it's important for us to focus on trying to get more trees planted, particularly in new development and working with property owners for some of our larger multifamily buildings, I would, I would argue that sometimes the plantings might require a little bit of give and take and because you, you're going to lose space. And in some of these places, the space for cars is actually quite tight. But when we are thinking about single-family renters, in particular, in some of our, our wards where we have a larger population of renters, we have to keep in mind that, that you have to reach the homeowner, which is often not who we reach out to in terms of tree plantings along sidewalks and things like that. So those are just a couple of points that I, I want folks to keep in mind when we're talking about race equity and tree plantings. And it's, it's, it's not a, hey, let's just talk to you and see if we can plant a tree in your yard. It is more of thinking about the processes we have in place, the inequities that have resulted as, as, as a point of the processes we have. And the end result of that is that we have fewer trees in certain wards. Thank you.
Thank you. I think just building on what Councilwoman C R C just said, I think if we look at the one, two, three, fourth bullet in the resolve clause, I think we can strengthen that and not just talk about assessing existing ones, but talk about doing that through a racial equity lens. And really thinking about what all, what we have in that bullet and how that gets played out. I know, just talking to some folks recently to get some input on this. You know, one of the things, and again, these are things that have been in place, so it's not necessarily like what we're doing, but how do we improve in the future? Is when people Is when people decide that they, you know, trees are being planted in an area and they turn down having the trees planted, doing the follow-up of finding out why. Because I think that will also help inform what is, you know, what are the barriers? And so at the moment, we don't have a process for collecting that information. So I'll just make a note of that. Let's see, Councilwoman Kovar, you had your hand up.
I think Councilmember Smith was.
Oh, yeah, you are. It came up. All right, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I appreciate you guys putting this together. My question is, you know, will there be a subsidy provided for the black and brown folks in the city that either live in single-family homes that they own or that they rent and you can get the landlords to agree to these plantings? Have you guys thought about a specific subsidy for black and brown folks?
Well, I mean, this gets to the, to the budgetary question that we're talking about. And I think we wanted to assess the extent to which our colleagues even agree with what we are proposing here, although as Councilmember DePaul says, this is not that dissimilar from, from what we had before. But if we're going to beyond what's just in the tree ordinance, adopt a plan to, in a broader way, and maybe as connected to things like sidewalks, or maybe it's done in other ways, a broader way to expand tree coverage in the areas that, where it's lacking currently. That would have to be a budgetary, an item in the budget to make that work, I think, anyway. Because I think the reality is, it's an expensive thing and a lot of people won't feel like they could afford it. One of the things that was suggested to me in hearing from, heard from a lot of residents just in the last few days who knew this was coming up. And one of the suggestions was, could the, we have a small fund for people who have a tree come down in a storm and can't afford to have it cut up and taken away and addressed. And that could go, that goes for low-income people and that's used occasionally. But what about using the tree fund specifically to help lower-income people who want trees to be able to do that? And I do think that annually, there's some funds in the tree, in the tree fund that don't get used every time. And so that, to me, would be one way of, we haven't talked about that among the three of us yet, so I don't want to get ahead of my skis or outside my lane or whatever. But to me, that would be one relatively easier way to at least think about trying that out because we do already have that money set aside. And maybe there would be a way to do that. We'd have to pass an ordinance to make that possible.
You know, I just want to make sure that we just are not just saying racial equity, but we're actually being intentional, trying to make sure that black and brown folks, the people that we know don't have the trees, that we are actually putting in systems, subsidies in place for that to be corrected. We're not just going to say in a general sense that we want racial equity, but this is the program, this is how it's going to be managed, and this is the enforcement to make sure that this happens. Is there any discussion about hosting a roundtable with the multifamily property managers to see exactly what issues they may have in, in planting more trees and how we can be helpful to, to make sure that this, this goal of the council happens?
Well, I would say, that's exactly the kind of thing that we contemplate doing in the portions of the resolution that specifically are focused on collaboration and outreach and so on. And I don't think we ran to the level of saying, let's have this many meetings in this many buildings with so many tenant associations, because I don't think we know the answers to that yet. But that, to me, is exactly the kind of thing and the kind of way that we should do it. And I, I would add that, as is often the case, and when we're talking about outreach, and it was the case when we were talking about outreach that has slowed some, obviously because of COVID, on the rec center renovation, there's the language question as well. And when Councilmember Circe was talking about the, the barriers that exist to people understanding maybe how to get a sidewalk, when you get a sidewalk, how to get a tree. That's, there's a few levels of barriers there. One is, one is language, but there are others as well in terms of communities that have been marginalized and maybe still are today in terms of their understanding sort of where the levers are to get things like this done. You know, there are many of the streets in my part of town have sidewalks. They don't all, and some people like it that way and some don't. But I think most people have a sense for, if they wanted to get that, they know who to contact and how to really start that, start that going. And in general, the language barrier is not going to be there. So I, I agree, Councilmember Smith, that those are the kinds of things we definitely want to do. And to the extent that the council signs off on this type of outreach and collaboration, we would design, my hope would be that we would be able to design specific programs along those lines.
And, and just my final point, I would say that before we adopt a final ordinance, we should convene a meeting with the property managers, at least in the larger ones, through Ms. Wiggins to get their sense of how we can improve this legislation. I mean, they, they might have ideas that, after the fact, we may not be able to implement after we pass this. So I think it would be good if we got it on the front end before we take a vote on this ordinance.
Are you talking about property owners, tenant associations, both?
No, no, the, the property managers that represent the landlords. Because they would know what the landlord would accept or they're not going to accept. Thank you guys for, for all your effort.
Great. And you want to just acknowledge that our head of public works, who has been working on this as well, is with us. And just to give some of her thoughts. And specifically, I'd like to ask, I know Councilmember Kovar just talked about this, that we have about over $100,000 in the tree fund. When we were doing the budget this year, on the hold list, we put a part-time intern and $30,000 for implementation of work on a tree canopy. So I just want to ask Ms. Braithwaite if she has any thoughts or things she'd like to contribute at this time.
Sure, thank you. I mostly want to recognize and appreciate all the work that our residents, as well as council members, have put into this topic. It, it always is, every time it comes up, one that reflects the deep level of interest and concern and environmental perspective of our residents on this issue. And it is a challenge to try to find the right balance. So every time this comes up, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness by which it's approached. That said, there's some unique things going on with this current presentation that I haven't seen before. A part of it makes it a little more confusing. We do have an ordinance that's very specifically geared towards when a person wants to remove a tree. So separate from policy, canopy, reforestation, the ordinance is a functional method. It's a goal of the city to maintain trees to the extent possible. So we have a permit process that actually regulates and restricts what people can do on private property as it, as it stands for existing trees. So I, I understand why the resolution and the ordinance are being brought together to talk about combined, but they really are very separate things. And I think part of what will happen is there'll be some confusion if we continue to blend them. So I would strongly encourage us to look at the ordinance as the statutory mechanism it is and determine what changes and updates we want to make to that. And then the resolution is really much more of a planning document and a focus document to outline what the council wants to see done in terms of enhancing and supporting tree canopy. And I think what you've got in the resolution starts to paint that picture. My, my sense of what will need to happen is, once the resolution is, is finalized and pretty well-formed, staff's going to have to come back with an implementation plan to meet that, meet those goals and also paint out how many years we're looking at to reach these goals and, and create some milestones along the way. So year one, this is what we do. Year two, this is what we do. So we can kind of build a program around that tree canopy resolution. So the city's never had a tree canopy resolution before. So this is a document that's really a vision statement, a planning statement. And then we need to come back and show you what our implementation plan is for that. I've had some conversations with, with members of the tree community in general, and I think there is probably some potential for collaboration with existing groups that advocate for trees and work in neighborhoods in DC and Prince George's and other places that we could really partner with and tap into so that we won't be reinventing the wheel. But I'd real, I'm really excited about that possibility. That said, in order to put the time in to create those partnerships and do that face-to-face kind of community meeting, outreach, legwork, understanding the, the concerns of the community, we don't have the staff hours available for that currently. So we're going to have to figure out how to make that happen. And possibly a collaboration with an organization that's already got some of those measures in place might help meet those needs. But again, we're really going to have to understand the council's goals through the resolution and then create an implementation plan for how we're going to, to reach that. So I think those are the two main points I wanted to make. We really are looking at two very different tools here, one of which is the ordinance, which we, we tend to revise every five to 10 years. And its time is up again, and now we're looking at that. Also, Mayor, you had mentioned not having information about when we do street tree planting and why people don't want street tree plants. While we don't have it historically, we certainly have it anecdotally for the most recent tree plant. So we give a number of avenues for people to say no. And when they say no, they, they tell us why. So, so we know why people say no, or at least why they said no in our last couple of rounds of street tree planting. So we've got some pretty clear information, both handwritten notes on the letter that we sent them where they get to pick which of three trees they want or no. And they will inevitably write us a little bit of message about what the no is about, all the way up to when we're putting the tree in the ground and they don't want it there, they give us a call. And then we, we certainly hear at that point, too, why people don't want that tree in their property. So we have a pretty good sense of what that is. That the, the challenge and the opportunity is to try to figure out a way to present the benefits in a way that may not be evident to folks that feel really strongly in their concern about accepting a tree in the right of way. So the current planting program that we have is a right-of-way program. I think what we're seeing in the tree canopy resolution is if we want to maintain or build our tree canopy, we're going to have to go to a private, you know, planting on private property. That is really where the, where the land is, where the space is, and what we're going to have to do in order to maintain our, our canopy. My sense is that if we were to have the LIDAR done this year, after what we survived through in 2018 and 19, our percentage canopy is going to be far below 58%. So I think we'll be shocked the next time we have the LIDAR done. I think the, the Ambrosia beetle and the heavy rains and the droughts have really done a number on some of our older overstory trees. So I think we're, we're really, we will be struggling to get anywhere near that percentage canopy again in the next 10 to 20 years.
If I might, I'd like to also just speak in about the capacity that staff has on this right now. For example, Councilmember Smith's suggestion of going out and talking to property managers. We're in COVID-19, heavy work right now. So we don't have, in my mind, staff to be able to go and, and do a whole nother topic. We may be able to do some, some minor survey kind of discussions. But I, I do want to recognize that we don't have staff capacity right now. It's a very difficult time. And so as we, as we think about kind of what gets adopted and then what the work plan is, I just, I ask that you keep that in mind. And, you know, it's, it's, it's simply the nature of the heavy pressure that we're under right now with the pandemic.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kostic.
Thank you. And thank you, Ms. Braithwaite, for the, the very thorough context. I, I think it was helpful to kind of look at it in that, in that sense, in terms of how we're framing the, the resolution and how we're framing the ordinance. And I think to some extent, you know, we've, the three of us, I think I've gotten so into the, into the forest or weeds or whatever you want to say on this, that sometimes you, you actually forget what, what you're actually looking at. So that was a helpful reminder for me. I agree with many of the discussions we've had so far tonight. And this is what I was really hoping for, was to have this sort of robust discussion about, especially the racial equity portion of this and to make sure that we have a policy and a resolution that's adopted that sets us up for success moving forward, so that we are building a more equitable tree canopy in the city. I, I also, in, in Ward Three, see multifamily buildings as being one of the most important keys to this. I think single-family homes are going to be really key. But, and, you know, other, other properties, institutional, parkland, those sorts of things. But what I've heard from a number of residents is particularly when a landlord is not living in the city, is not on the premises regularly, if a tree, you know, if a tree dies or tree needs to be removed, there's no incentive for them to replant it. It's easier to just pay the fee, be done. They don't live there. They don't see it every day. They don't really have a huge motivation to replant a tree instead. So I, I would love to have a deeper delve, as Councilmember Smith was suggesting, in terms of how we can really reach some of these, these landlords and property managers and see if there is something that could be done to incentivize that or have that be part of a pilot, part of the pilot project that we're considering, just some way to sort of get into that, that aspect of this a little more deeply. In terms of the overall canopy goal, we're talking about no net loss. But I think as Ms. Braithwaite noted, you know, when you look at the idea of no net loss, it seems like we're, we're maintaining the status quo, but it really is going to be a heavy lift. It's, it's actually doing a lot, even though the, the percentage does not change significantly. And I think that's important to keep in mind because it's going to be a challenge even to maintain, and it's not even maintaining, it's growing back up to 58%. So I do think that's, that's an important key in this. And then I just wanted to briefly note a couple of, a couple of things that I found that I thought were interesting as I was sort of delving into this from other cities that, that have tree ordinances and tree programs. One of the things we mentioned in the resolution is to do some more outreach and specifically focus on maintenance. And I think we could, longer term, certainly this is a staff capacity issue, but I think longer term, we can look at having some more user-friendly materials, having some more attractive flyers or pamphlets or just ways of getting information out to people about maintaining trees, because that could help us save a lot of trees and reduce the loss of canopy. I know when we talked about this previously, the city urban forest manager noted that a huge percentage of trees could actually be saved through regular maintenance. And so there might be some opportunities there to just work on protecting our canopy before we get to the level of trees dying. And, and some of that is outreach as well and communication. And then we also talked a little bit about the idea of donations. And I think this is probably not going to be a big part of our funding for trees, but it might be a portion of it. And one of the programs I, I came across was a program that allowed for people to donate in honor or in memory of someone and then have a temporary, just like a, a piece of paper, not a permanent plaque or anything like that, put onto a tree. And that might be a way just to sort of incentivize people to donate and provide something of meaning. So that might be something to look into in the future as well.
Councilwoman DiBala.
Yes, thank you. Backing up a little, I, I did forget to.
Um, backing up a little, I I did forget to mention the key role of of Darrell and his staff, and thank you so much for all the support you've given to to this program and to working on top of the program, to working with us to look at all of these issues, and I really appreciate it. Um, to the points that um Councilmembers Cersei and Smith made, if if there are specific things that you would like to see considered, um, because this is a a planning document, this isn't saying we will definitely provide 10 subsidies to 15 people at X amount of money. Those let that those last, that third resolve, the last couple bullets in particular that the mayor was was pointing to about assessing existing programs through a racial equity lens and developing a pilot project. If there are specifics that you think that you, things you've mentioned that fit in there, that that's a great place to put them as something that that staff and the and the treaty commission, whoever takes the next step on this, um, would be then very clearly asked to to look at those issues. So just a thought. Um, and on on the question of the the interim and the $30,000 on hold, um, it might, I I'd be looking to whether this is a time to to think about releasing that so we can take the next steps on this. Um, both the ordinance and the resol, but particularly the resolution, particularly the equity piece of it, because without knowing what the barriers are, without knowing, talking, getting out and talking to to residents and owners and figuring out what is gonna work for people, it it's hard to do the plantings to get the get the results that we're looking for. So thank you for listening to me.
Um, Councilwoman Cersei.
Uh, thank you so much. Um, so another point um that I I do think is important is, you know, how we are ultimately able to influence um state highway um, as well as, you know, in addition to working with um uh private property owners. Um, I know that, you know, in a number of the large commercial dish, um, commercial um areas, you know, there's often this confusion about who owns what in terms of where you could even place the tree, let alone um, you know, if you were trying to to create more green space within in property lines. And I I I do think that it's important for us to prioritize, and and I'll take a look at at this last resolve clause to see if we can, to Councilmember Smith's point, you know, explicitly prioritize certain areas and certain things, because um, the crossroads area is an area where we we don't have a lot of green space. The purple line is coming through, they're not planning to plant a bunch, you know, more trees. We know this. Um, and so if there are ways that we should also include language around lobbying and trying to work with folks like State Highway and MTA and the like, um, to really try to push the needle on um planting in what is in essence, one of our largest commercial areas. I mean, it's a lot of square footages over there. And if we could figure out a way um to work with the property owners as well as, you know, State Highway to come up with some innovative approaches to tree planting in the crossroads, I mean, that could potentially be a game changer. And the same could be true um for along New Hampshire Avenue, um, especially given that the planning department is working on um pedestrian safety efforts, you know. So, you know, this might be an opportunity for us not just to think about private plantings on private properties from a homeowner perspective or a multifamily perspective, but how can we come up with some innovative approaches to working with SHA um, and others to to provide more more of a tree canopy in our commercial areas?
Councilmember Cersei, um, I'm hoping that by the end of July that we also have a presentation to the council from our planning unit that has been evaluating open space and comparing it kind of with race equity issues. And so that also um comes into play about where we may have space for trees. Um, and so that I think should be coming uh to you in the next few weeks.
Great, thank you. I'm looking forward to that.
Right, um, just to echo what Councilwoman Cersei just said, I I was thinking that um in addition to agreeing with the other resolve clauses, and I can um send some um suggestions by email, um, ha- have adding to it another resolve clause that gets more specifically at some of the stuff that um Councilmember Smith talked about. And I would like us to to strengthen this to actually talk about directing money either from the tree fund or taking it off the hold list to actually implementing um, some of this work um in the near future. Um, I I do think um, that is an important discussion for us to have. Um, you know, I think sometimes we can pass things that are aspirational, but um as Councilmember Smith stated, that like we need to actually, if we wanna do this, um, actually talk about how we're gonna allocate some of the resources we have. Um, and so I would like to see that strengthened as well um in here. Um, and I'm happy to also, I I added a couple, I made a couple few changes to um talk about, I think, working with members of the community, um, not just, I think we had in a couple of sentences, uh, places, um, identifying locations for plantings and attention and prioritizing tree plantings in areas of the city with lower percentage of existing tree canopy. Um, I'd like to see us like add some language about working with members of the community um, in those areas, so it's not just us identifying places. Um, but I think it goes to what Ms. Braithwaite was talking about um before as well. Um, I think Councilmember Kovar did ask us a couple of questions when we started, whether or not some of these were the um, the right principles um and where it was going. I think overall, in my mind, it it um, these go in the right direction. Um, I know um, we were given a suggestion um to look at strengthening the language on native. Um, I'm looking here, um, native uh species. Um, and I would be opening to um strengthening that language as well um in here as long as um it was clear that we were also um, when it wasn't available or if there were other reasons um to plant um something that was not native, um, that we had that flexibility as well. Um, so I I think some of the language that was presented to us um from residents moved in that direction. Um, and I'd be willing to um include that in the in the next iteration of this.
Yeah, could I just jump in on that for?
Yeah.
I didn't know if someone else has raised their hand, but um, I think there's a way to um in effect, modify uh the exceptions to the native requirement, maybe gets to what you're talking about. The one point I would make is that that could be relevant for both the resolution and the ordinance, and I appreciate Ms. Braithwaite's point about how the two are different. They're connected in certain ways, and I think that would be an example of something that we would wanna have some consistency on. So I'm agreeing with you, but potentially saying that if a change would be made in that area, we might end up doing it to both the resolution and the ordinance.
All right, I'm seeing no other hands at this time. Um, do we feel like that answered some of the questions that were outstanding um on the resolution and gave enough feedback so that we could go back, make some additional edits and move forward with the resolution? I feel like we've heard a lot of consistency. I'm looking to Peter and Casey, sorry, I need somebody to nod their head.
Yeah.
I guess I'd just like to ask our our people, you know, we heard a lot about the um the no net loss and then feasible going beyond that. I I mean, I'm not sure that many of our colleagues said what they what they thought about that. We heard comments from staff, and so I think since that's kind of central to this, it would be good just to understand where people were on that point.
If I could ask, um, on the no net loss um matter, is there something here that if we don't reach that target, I mean, what's the, you know, I it's part of it, I'm just kind of curious about what how how strongly you feel about no net loss, and again, that timeframe that you see that in or or what is it trigger? I think maybe that comes out of whatever the metrics are that you that you wanna sees established or?
Me, to me, it's a goal, which means um, in a resolution with a goal, if I understand it correctly, you're not literally saying it is a law that we must achieve this, because oh, there could be a super hurricane one year that wipes out all these trees, and you haven't committed some sort of violation when that occurs. So the point is that you uh set this as a goal, but then, as I think, as Brayden was saying, if we if we find the way through staff or collaboration with other groups or grants or whatever it is, or funding potentially through the hold or the or the old funds or the tree fund, we develop a plan that over time says, here are the steps that that we think will help us uh reach these goals, and then we assess how we're doing each year. But I, but if you're asking, is there some sort of, you know, penalty that happens if you don't reach it? I I don't think that's the case. Um, but I think it's hard to make progress if you don't set yourself a target and then develop a plan for trying to get there, and then you can assess how you're going. And then in a given year, if we have a particular set of steps that we think will help us get there, and we do the annual analysis, if that's what we end up deciding to do, and it falls short by some 10%, then we can decide in the budget after that, say, okay, look, we tried this, we fell 10% short, are we gonna either change the way we're trying to do it? Are we gonna put more money into it in the budget? Or are we gonna say, we can't afford it this year, we'll have to try next year? That's how I sort of see this happening, but the the purpose of the resolution is, once you've got these goals and principles, then yes, if we're able to develop a specific plan to bring it into reality, that's what we would wanna do.
Appreciate that.
This is your question or not?
Well, I mean, you know, I'm to implement the goals of the council with staff. And so if we're failing at that, kind of like, how does that get communicated? How does it then, you know, I just, I just wanna be clear about the fact that, you know, this does give a, this does put a demand on the count, on this, on the staff to work towards that goal and to show you how we're doing. I just, I just, I just wanna make sure that that's kind of the the implementation process that we go for, would be those back and back discussions with council over time.
I I think also, um, and my colleagues can jump in on this too if they want. Um, you know, when we have the housing strategic plan and and we're in the early stages of having not that long ago adopted the climate plan, it sets up a set of goals like this too, and then it's incumbent on the staff to the extent it's feasible. And in some cases, we rub that into the um, language in the climate plan as well, and the staff come and they they tell us how they think it can be done, and we decide which things make sense, and you know what happens if we're unhappy with something, and and then you hear about it. So I think in some ways, this is a a shorter version of some of those plans, but the idea is, if we were to adopt this, then a plan would uh most likely arise from that, and the question would be just how we, how we fund it. And maybe the thing to do is to say in the implementation, um, the staff will develop a plan by such and such a date on how all these things are gonna be done.
Right, I appreciate that, and I think, um, I mean, I think that's the right way to do it. I guess I would anticipate that. I, you know, I go back to some staff capacity even for coming up with the plan. So I'd like to work with you on that.
And maybe the answer to that is what the mayor was talking about. Either using some of the tree funds or a little bit further along in this fiscal year when we understand more about what's happening with COVID and how much of the on-hold money um needs to stay on hold, used for its original purposes, or or could potentially be used for this through a budget, and then we can make that decision as well.
Uh, Councilwoman Cersei.
Um, I was just gonna say that I'm I'm okay with a known no net loss as a goal. Um, I I don't think it precludes us from exceeding that, but I think it provides us with a realistic um goal for where we can feasibly be. Um, I guess the big question is the timing um in terms of how how much time are we giving ourselves to deal with this no let, no net loss, right? So, you know, if the idea is that we're losing about 2%, naturally, 2% of the canopy um every year, or 2% or 1% a year, um, and we're giving ourselves like 10 years, and that no net loss, as Councilwoman Kostic's point, means you need to gain like 10% of your tree canopy, right? Um, so I think that's the thing that that will be important. So I I don't have concerns about the no net loss goal, but more about how much time are we giving ourselves to get there?
I remember, this is uh, I, this is relevant to the, to what you, to the Cersei, Councilmember Cersei's just said, when the University of Vermont folks came, they were asked this question about 58%, 61%, it changes over time a little bit. Is there a trend here that it's gone down? And at that point, they said, you don't really know till you see the next one. And I think we just heard um, the Public Works Director say something similar. We could all look at the big tree, big oaks that have have come down in the last year, and we have different opinions about what that means in terms of the tree canopy. We don't know till we do the next survey, we don't know till we get the data. Um, that said, I, that's why I think a no net loss overall goal with a target of 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 increasing in the neighborhoods that that are already lower is a good one and not to go further than that, um, at least until we see what the impact is of um, of of recent weather events and 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 disease events on on the, on the canopy overall. Um, so I just wanted to throw that that out there as a, as a balance, uh, as a little more information about what what no net loss means or doesn't mean.
Just one other thought on that, um, the the three LiDAR uh measurements that we received over a 10-year period, so there was one, it was five years, and then there was another five years, so in three measures over 10 years. And I think I'm gonna get this right, it went from 59 to 62 to 58. And so the professor said, oh, look, you're average out, you're very steady over 10-year period at 60%. That's true, but it's also true that between the middle one and the final one, we actually dropped 5%. And so a lot of it does depend on the um time horizon that you're using. And so we don't know if the 59 to 62 to 58, that's just a sort of typical fluctuation you have over a period of time, or if it's, that was a high watermark, and now for some reason it's dropping. And uh, but again, if you set a goal as opposed to a legal requirement with some sort of impact, if you don't achieve it, that's two different things. If we set a goal, and for whatever reason we don't get to it, then we find out why not and what's going on, and try to find a way to turn that around. But again, it's like so many of the things that we have, it's it's dollars and staff and and so on. I was encouraged that the that the Public Works Director, Ms. Braithwaite, talked about collaborating with other organizations that are already doing things of this nature and that potentially there might be grants out there as well, and there may be organized groups within the city who could who could help us with these things as well. So um, I don't wanna right now say we just don't have the money for something like this. I'd rather have us say, let's try to get there and and then we'll figure out it. And if we don't have enough money to do everything right away, then we don't. That doesn't mean we don't still have it as a goal.
Just to follow up on what Councilwoman Cersei was asking, so right now it stated no net loss of urban forest canopy overall, maintaining an average level of approximately 60%. 60% tree canopy coverage. Do we need to put some timeframe around? Like, is that like, for the next six years, for the next 10 years, if we're doing the LiDAR every three years? Like, what do we mean by an average level? If you're taking an average, what are we, like, I don't know, maybe it's getting too late. But just maybe we need to look at how that's.
We could also, if we're going to end this charge in the staff of developing a plan, which we talked about potentially having in the implementation section, we could say the plan could include that type of schedule and target dates and so on.
Yeah, if I can just toss out quickly, this is something that we talked about as, among the three of us, Councilmember Cover, Dibala, and I, in terms of a timeframe. And I personally don't feel like I have a sense of what is the most appropriate timeframe for that. So, I mean, I would defer to Ms. Braithwaite, or if we want to make that a part of, as we were just saying, a part of the identifying the plan and the exact procedure we're going to follow, the implementing plan that might make sense.
Yeah, I might add, I, again, I'm, I'm very nervous about the 60%, given what, what data we have for the number of waivers, for instance, that were issued in FY20. We more than doubled the number of waivers that we issued. So we're usually under 200. And FY20, we had 407. So we've had a substantial loss of large trees that died. So I'm nervous, but maybe it's because, you know, I don't want to fail at something before we've even started. Though, given that this canopy goal is a new, new program, there's a couple of concerns I have. One is that I would rather focus on our, on our plan, the neighborhoods we're going to reach, the number of meetings, the outreach, that kind of thing, so we can try to get the message across to neighborhoods. That's going to require staffing and support versus focused on a number, because it feels very much out of our control at this point, particularly given the current state of climate change. Though, I would be less tied to those numbers and more to deliverables in terms of how many trees we were able to put in the ground, how many neighborhood meetings we had, how many new outreach methods we, we developed as the measurement of our effort. Because I think we're going to be chasing, kind of driving ourselves a little nuts with a canopy goal, particularly since the numbers that we had last had were from 2018. And we know by all measures that we've experienced a cataclysmic loss of large overstory trees in the last two years.
Member Smith?
Yeah, so I just want to go on record that I support the no net loss. And I had a question, how do we know the condition of trees that were, that were planted in the last two, three years? Is there some system that we have that we send somebody out to go check on them? Do we have like a barcode on the trunk of the tree that we can scan and say, this tree's in good condition, this tree's not in good condition? How do we know that our efforts have been worthwhile?
That's an excellent question. I spent some time talking to Casey Trees this week about survivability and, and the different aspects that they use. We do not currently track nor have a way to track tree planting. I mean, there's the anecdotal information. When we're planting street trees, we can see which ones have survived and which ones have not. But in terms of replanting programs where people are required to replant on private property, we have no measure or method of tracking the survival rate of those trees. We can ascertain what that's likely to be based on, you know, national standards and data that's been gathered about survivability of species over time. But we'd be, you know, applying somebody else's research to our own conditions. We don't have any direct way to gather that information.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar, did you have something else to add?
Just one other thing. I do want to say, I appreciate the point about whether we twist ourselves and not, if that was the phrase, to try to meet the goal. But, you know, I think about some of the things that we've included in, for example, the climate framework that we adopted earlier this year, which had some very specific goals, but also made it clear that we were not saying, we didn't just have goals, we had goals with timelines by which we hoped that we would be able to achieve them. But we didn't say, that's too much for us to try to do. He said, look, that's a goal. We want to try to do it. Whether we get there or not, we don't know. So I, I get the point about staff and budget, and that's not one to be, to be minimized. But I think without giving us something that is maybe a little challenging, I'm not sure we gain much from.
I'm going to suggest, given the hour, unless there's, so we haven't heard, for example, from Councilmember Siemens. But if there's no burning issues other than Councilmember Siemens, maybe we should move on to the ordinance. And the main reason I say that is not because I really want to talk about the technical details of the ordinance, but this question of replacement requirements, and how much that gives us towards this, let's assume for a moment, no net loss, long-term goal. How much that contributes, and how much that doesn't contribute, is very relevant to this question of what the overall goal is.
Can I just add one thing? And I'm not asking for a reaction, just to sort of stick it, like, think about, given the conversation we just had, is there some way of setting a goal of no net loss of the canopy overall, based on, like, the next, like, the next LiDAR, or something like?
Or the current.
Or something, yeah. Just think about, we don't have to, like, workshop it right now, but I'm just thinking about what Ms. Braithwaite just said, and understanding what we've experienced over the last two years and what's possible. So this is something to think about, like, thinking about, like, do we, where do we set the bar? And is it to take into consideration the past three LiDARs, and then the next one, and it's no net loss from there, kind of thing? I don't know. Just, I just wanted to be, because I know I would not remember that thought past the next two minutes. So I wanted to get it out there. Thank you.
All right. Do you want to move on to the ordinance?
I do. What about everybody else?
Yep. Good idea.
Everybody?
Yes.
Got a little stamina left. So Jessie, perhaps we could get the slides back up? I'm looking sideways, because I'm looking to see if I can get them back up myself. Yeah, please, the next slide.
14, I think it is.
Yeah. So, so you may recall, lo these many minutes ago, I said that in the ordinance proper, we were going to focus on three things tonight, two of which are relatively quick. And I'm going to do them, summarize them for you, and then to have Councilmember Kostic go into some detail about the replacement of trees, the requirements for replacing trees when they get a permit to be removed. So to recap in the ordinance, a lot of the ordinance is about the protection of trees from various other activities. So you have the tree impact assessment and the protection plan and a permit. You also have removal of, of trees for a bunch of reasons. And the focus that we have had has been on the, the dead trees, the hazard trees, the active decline trees, moving of those. So overarching that in the ordinance, not in the resolution, is a section called Legislative Findings, which is essentially the purpose of the audit or ordinance. Let's go first to the two things I'm going to talk about quickly right now. We've lost the number 12, 12, 12, 01, 0, for those who want to follow along with the actual text. So the, the Legislative Findings said, were, were more focused on the role of individual trees in, in why we care about them. And this version focuses, is more aligned with tree canopy goals, looking at the urban forest as a whole. It identify, it includes racial equity as a priority, which obviously is a new concept, as far as the ordinance is concerned. It talks about a diverse, resilient, and sustainable urban forest as a, as a, is a goal. It talks about community as well as individual stewardship of trees. If, it repeats that focus on native and climate-adapted trees, not just, well, going further than where we've been before. And again, community value and ownership of the urban forest. So take a look at that section, look how it's changed. But that's, that's all I think we need to say about that tonight. Next slide, please. And then at the end of the entire tree ordinance, there has been a section about the role of the urban forest manager, and what their duties are. And, and again, in keeping with this notion that we're talking about the forest and not just the permit and, and removal programs for individual trees, we have, that's been reworked to talk more about how the program that will report back to council annually, and also the development of what we've been calling a master plan, I think is the word in the ordinance. Maybe it needs to say implementation plan instead, that looks out five to six years. Maybe that needs to be 10, in keeping with the conversation we just had. But that's the changes in the section about the role of the city staff, if you will. So, so that's how that's evolved. So annual reporting to describe the urban forest condition qualitatively, focus on progress meeting goals, not literally counting every single tree, but this sense of, were we able to make some progress in the goals we set, including addressing inequities that as, as you work on the program, things come up, council wants to hear about. Number of permits, trees removed, trees planted, that kind of thing. Any education and outreach efforts last year or two, there've been quite a few more, a couple workshops, and that kind of thing. And any things that the council needs to take action on in order to keep the, to help the program. Second thing, the master plan every five to six years, building off of the LiDAR data, that the surveys that are done every, every three years. And the planting plans, the long-term planting plans, including for trees removed, that'll tie back to something, the case that Councilmember Kostic will talk about, in terms of the, the, how to, how to balance out those replacement requirements. The third thing being that species list we talked about earlier, for replanting, revised and maintained. So in the ordinance, that's where, this is the section where it talks about that. And then the other issues that are addressed in the resolution are listed in the, no, let me rephrase. Other issues are addressed in the resolution, they are not in the report or Legislative Finding sections, because this is an ordinance, and you don't want to have some of this stuff in an ordinance. It's just not appropriate. So those two sections have changed significantly, and you might want to take a look at them. And I'll stop there, so that Councilmember Kostic can, can pick up on the replace, the tree replacement requirements. But first, any questions or comments on these two sections? Butter, a lot of buttering. Somebody has their mic on. Hearing no objections. Should we go on?
Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll go into the next section, if that is good with everybody. Can I have the next slide, please? Great. So you've waited for this part until almost midnight. I know this is the most exciting part of the, the whole discussion, and it is very late. But this is actually probably one of the most important things in the ordinance. So I hope we can take a few minutes to give this some, some close attention, and get questions answered, and get a sense from people sort of of where people are standing, what people are thinking on this. This is something that Councilmember Dibala, Councilmember Kovar, and I have discussed, and, you know, struggled with a little bit in terms of how, what the potential impact might be on canopy, and what, what the changes that we're proposing, what the implications would be. So, as we said, tree canopy is about 58% to 60%. And as we've said, there are significant challenges to the tree canopy based on climate change, weather effects, and infestations. For there to be no net loss of canopy, we need to replace that canopy, to replant the canopy, to replace trees that are dying or are removed. And the replacement requirements that are currently in the, the tree ordinance are designed to replace tree canopy for those trees that are removed within 25 years. So they're based on the size of the tree that is removed. And I'll get into that a little more in a minute. There is a tree rating chart that we have later in the presentation that we can reference if anyone has a question about it. The, the rating chart is the first of two steps that establishes what the requirements for replacement are. So I think, as we've said before, and I think everyone has general familiarity with it, when you remove a tree, the urban forest manager comes out and assesses whether or not you will be allowed to have a permit or a waiver, and the tree is rated. And the current chart has, for that rating, has six categories. A new and revised chart that was developed through work of the urban forest manager with the Tree Commission has only four factors. There were a few factors that were removed. And so the point scale has changed a little bit. And the, the reason for doing that was, some of the factors were a little difficult to assess in a numeric way. And that's my understanding. And then also, there was a shift in the phrasing of the chart as well, to align better with international standards. Next slide, please. So the proposed replacement requirements in the draft ordinance that you have would do the following. First of all, there would be no replacement requirements for the removals of trees that are dead, hazardous, or in active decline. So this is different, because right now, we do have a requirement for replacement trees, for trees that are in active decline. Generally, dead trees or trees that are considered to be hazardous in terms of their health rating, receive a waiver. And as I think we've referenced before, the ordinance would move away from having a waiver, so that there's basically a permit for every tree. But that permit does not require a replanting for dead or hazardous trees. And then this new category of trees that are actively declining and are clearly going to die in the near future, but are still kind of hanging on for a bit longer. And as well, this adds a new provision for no requirement of replacement trees, for trees that are impacting a permanent structure. So a tree that is impacting a garage or a house, for example. In, on the replacement chart, which I'll show you in a minute, the replanting requirements for undesirable species that are removed are half of the replanting requirements for trees that are not considered undesirable. That is not a change rule we have currently. That's what we currently have in the ordinance right now. And a higher And a higher percentage replanting requirements for healthier trees, and that's the same as what we have right now. As you go up in the rating scale, the trees that are rated higher and healthier have a larger percentage replanting requirement than those that are rated lower. As we talked about before, we've kind of approached this from the perspective of wanting to encourage replantings. Even where they are not required and encourage donations. That's not explicitly in the ordinance, but that's something that would be addressed more through the resolution. And as we said before, this implies a shift more from individual to community responsibility for replanting. Next slide, please. I think you went back. There we go. So fees, there are two different sets of options if you have a replant requirement for a tree. You can replant a tree or however many trees you are required yourself. Or you can pay a fee in lieu of replanting. Staff have recommended adjusting the amount of that replanting fee, which is currently $175 per tree to $300 per tree. And that would reflect the actual cost of the tree and two years of maintenance of the tree. Part of the potential benefit of doing the increase in the fee in lieu as well might be that it would encourage people to plant onsite if they, you know, if it's easier to just pay the fee, then we don't have as many people planting on private property. And we've discussed the importance of having more private property plantings. And then permitting fees would be $50 across the board. And that's what staff have proposed currently. It's my understanding that for a tree removal permit, it's $50 for a tree removal waiver, which you would get if you are removing a tree that is dead or hazardous, it is only $25. So that would be a change in the fees for those in this new structure. Next slide, please. And here are the existing and the proposed ratings and replacement requirements. So in the existing column over on the left, trees that are rated, trees are rated between six and 30. Lowest rated trees would be a six, highest are a 30. And then some within that lower range are currently receiving waivers, probably many of them. I'm not sure Daryl could speak to that more specifically, but those trees then do not have replanting requirements. However, in general, trees that don't receive the waiver between six and 15, trees that are not considered undesirable, have a 1% replacement requirement. The next category 2%, and then the next category 3%. And depending on the size of the tree, that could result in a requirement to replace one with one tree. Or it could be, in some cases, 11 trees. So it can be pretty significant depending on the size of the tree as well as the health. In the proposed, in what we have before us in the resolution, in the ordinance, the replanting requirements for the lowest rated trees, so the trees rated from four to nine would be removed. So those trees would be trees that are, as I said, actively declining, expected to not make it more than a number of years. I don't know that there's a specific number, but sometimes in the past, we've sort of talked about maybe within three to five years potentially. That those trees would not have a replanting requirement. And that has been responsive to the discussions we've had previously where we identified a concern from the community and among council members that people didn't feel it was appropriate to be required to replace a tree that was going to be dying in the future and was potentially becoming more threatening to their house or security if they're concerned about it falling. And also to potentially allow for some more flexibility in encouraging people, first of all, to remove those trees before they die so that we don't have hazards. And also to allow people to sort of plan out their budgeting as well, if they're able to remove a tree now, but they're not sure they will be able to five years from now when it dies, that might be a benefit to people as well. And then at the higher levels, basically, as I said, the rating levels have changed. We now have a range of four to 20 in the new system. And previously we had a range of six to 30. So the, the levels here, one, two, three, basically line up equally, they just have different numbers. And so in the top rated, the top rated trees would still require a 3% replacement, but the lowest level ones would have no replacement at all. Next slide, please. Thank you. So potential impact of these changes, and this is pretty critical. There is a spreadsheet that is part of the meeting materials that I encourage you to take a look at. Eliminating the replanting requirements, as I discussed previously, would result in a reduction of the number of plantings that are required. And if something is not done to address that, that gap, we would have a reduction of tree canopy in the long run. So based on staff estimates from April 2019 to 2020, about two-thirds of the replantings that are required now and would have been required and would be required in the future if this were the same number of applications. Two-thirds of those requirements for replanting would not be required under the proposal. So the current number of trees that would be required to be replanted under the current system based on the applications for 112 trees that were removed would require 382 trees to be replanted. In the current, or in the proposed system, it would be only 129 required replantings. So it's about a loss of two-thirds of those replantings, which is pretty significant. Replacement requirements for the higher rated trees. So two of the other potential options we looked at in terms of trying to help mitigate this gap a little bit, and we would love to have a discussion about as well this evening are the recommendation from the tree commission, which was to increase the replanting requirements for the higher rated trees. So instead of having the 3% replacements for the highest rated trees, for example, it could be a 5%, which would be pretty significant for people paying for those replacements. It would help address the gap to an extent, but it would not eliminate the gap entirely. Also, the one-for-one replacement is another option that could be considered. So instead of having no replacement for those lowest rated trees of rating at four to nine, we could require one replacement tree regardless of size of the tree removed. And that would help, again, reduce that gap a little bit, but it would not eliminate the gap. Staff have said that a majority of the applicants are currently paying at the in lieu fee rather than replanting themselves. And as I said, the higher fee might help encourage some more private planting. It probably won't entirely, you know, result in everyone doing their own private property planting, but it could help a little bit. The other thing I want to flag, and maybe we can have Daryl discuss this in a couple of minutes, is that although this gap looks quite significant, there are, it's not clear to me that 100% of the 382 trees are actually being replanted in actuality, in actual practice, based on the funds that we have at the tree fund. So I'd be interested in understanding that a little more deeply, and I think that might be part of, part of, an important part of our discussion as well. I believe there's one more slide and then I will open it up to you all to discuss further. So some ways, as I said, to try to address this gap. The resolution and the ordinance are both tools for doing this. In the resolution, as we said, we're seeking to find some alternative ways to encourage people to maintain trees, to do additional outreach, to do additional plantings on private property. Things like that, which we discussed earlier, could help address the gap to an extent. We've also talked about more focus on community ownership of trees, which in the current ordinance is, is a concept that is integrated into it, but is more in the sense of allowing for people to appeal. So we allow people to appeal the removal of someone else's trees in some cases. But we don't, but when it comes to requiring people to actually replace those trees, it is currently mostly the private owner's responsibility, if not entirely. So, so one of the things that we have discussed in terms of addressing this gap is really moving more from that model where an individual owner is stuck with a replacement entirely to some more of the community ownership of replacing trees that are, that are not being removed for reasons of, you know, a healthy tree being removed for construction, for example, but a tree being removed because it's very close to dying and it's near someone's house, for example. Exploring incentives for more private plantings, as I said, if the lowering replanting, lowered replanting requirements are adopted, as we said, the city could make up the difference through additional private and public plantings and maintaining the health of mature trees to maintain canopy. But again, this does have budget and staffing implications. So if we are shifting from a model of having individual property owners replace trees that they remove and we want to maintain our canopy, we would need to find additional funds in the budget through taxes or grants, which may be available at some points, but might not be available on a permanent basis to help address that. So I know that was a lot of information and I tried to go through it very quickly. But I would love to open up and hear what people's thoughts are on this proposal in terms of both addressing the gap, what people are comfortable with, in terms of the potential impact on tree canopy and what, what sort of approach you would like to take in terms of the replacement requirements.
Sorry, is unmuted. Could we put back the slide that had the different options? I think it was the second to the last one you just had up. One right, yeah, I think it's the one right before that. Yeah, this one. So I don't know, this might be questions more from Ms. Braithwaite, but I guess I had a question on when people are wanting the higher rated trees. What are those situations usually that those trees are being taken down?
Sorry, had trouble unmuting myself. Typically for a, for a tree that's a higher rated tree in better condition, it's usually related to development of a property or construction that's taking place. In cases where it's a healthy tree and there isn't any particular reason other than a person's preference, that would typically be a denial. So if we're providing a preliminary approval for removal and it's a tree that's in fair, good condition, it's typically as a result of construction or something that's taking place on the lot.
And if we were, and you may not have this, but just any idea of the, if we were to go to this, the new system that is proposed that we currently have and given the potential drop in the number of trees that would be replanted, if yes, I'm trying to figure out, ask this question, because I know we have a problem with like, trees need to be mostly replanted right now based on what we know on private property. I mean, is there a way of making that up, I guess, in your estimation? For the city to be planting trees, whether there's places to plant them in public right of way, or would it be financially feasible?
I think it would have definitely some serious financial implications. We currently pay now a little over $213 a tree, I think, for our planting programs on street trees. So if we're looking at filling a gap of 100 or so trees, that's a significant amount of money. In addition, it would take the creation of a program like we have not yet created to promote private tree planting. We currently have the bulk buy program that happens in the spring and fall and we routinely get anywhere from 12 to 40 trees per bulk buy. So you know, that's, you know, self-selected and people finding the program themselves. If we were to do a more focused campaign in particular neighborhoods where we not quite go door to door, but practically go door to door to encourage tree planting, we could, we would have to do that level of work in order to plant that number of trees.
Yeah, I do think there are probably, there's probably potential, this is a topic for another day, on the bulk buy. Even just increasing the font size of that in the newsletter, I gotta say, it was really hard to read this year. I love my magnolia though, that I got, but it was, I think it's a bit of work. But yeah, okay. Let me think about that. Councilmember Siemens, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to wish everyone a good morning. I'm going to start off by saying that it's clear that through the years that our current tree ordinance is not keeping pace with the need. We are, as has been said several times tonight, losing tree canopy. And yet we have what some people have described as the most, I wouldn't say onerous, but, but one of the stiffest tree ordinances in the country. And yet, you know, it hasn't, hasn't helped us. There has helped us maybe, but it hasn't, hasn't kept pace with the loss of the tree canopy. So clearly we need to do something if, if we're interested in continuing to be a tree city, not just in name, but in fact. I really appreciate the amount of work that my colleagues have put into this. Councilmember Dibala and Councilmember Kovar and Councilmember Kostic for the immense amount of work that I know you've put into this. And also for, you know, the many other city residents who have, through the years, been advocates for our trees. Is this the right solution? I don't know that there is a right solution. That's why it's been such a struggle. This has been, and I was telling my wife earlier, where she said, you know, you're not going to get out of here until after midnight. I said, no. This has been one of the most difficult subjects that has been brought before the council time and again in the last 20 years. So again, I appreciate the thought that's gone into this. I, my brain hurts just thinking about it. I don't, I don't pretend to know what a right answer is. But I have to think that with the amount of time and effort that's been put into it by my colleagues, that this is the, an improvement over where we are. I don't think, as I mentioned to Councilmember Smith earlier, I don't think we could get any worse than where we are right now, unless it's just costs too much that it, that it breaks the whole idea. I know that Ms. Braithwaite has, has made a few comments on this tonight. I would really like to I would really like to get a little bit more in-depth opinions from Ms. Braithwaite and maybe a, a little better understanding of fiscal impact. At least some projection of fiscal impact before a final vote on this. But for right now, I, I'm I'm of the mind that, you know, I will support this because I think it's better than what we have and, and that's the best thing on the table. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar.
Yeah, um, thank you. And thanks for my colleagues for doing the presentation also. And I think a really big point for us to consider here is we took the various ideas that our colleagues have talked about and appeared to be supportive of for making modifications. We didn't know where it would turn out in terms of the numbers until we really got the analysis from, from staff. And I think in particular on the the declining but not yet dead. That's certainly something that, speaking for myself anyway, I'd be very open to changing that. And I think and that's one of the main factors that causes this to end up with losing more, more trees, I think. I would say that that intersects a little bit with the hazardous and so sometimes people will say it looks like this tree is almost dead and it's leaning toward my house or whatever the situation might be. And so I'd really like to be able to cut it down. And reality is, if we wanna make a change here. If it is hazardous and it can still come down, and that's what the, an arborist or forest manager is supposed to determine. There was a case recently where there was a tree leaning over two other two neighbors' properties and actually the tree ended up being determined to be on city property. And it was leaning, I took a look at it, I thought that tree falls, it's gonna destroy one or both houses. And the consulting arborist said, well, let's give it thirty days. Looked like it was, yeah, it had a few leaves. They waited the thirty days, the neighbors weren't then happy about it, the residents, but after the thirty days, it kinda relieved and it, and it was okay. And so it wasn't that they were against the tree being there because it seemed like it was dying. They were against the tree being there, it seemed like it was dying because it might fall on them. So I'd be pretty open to you know, backing off on that change depending what the rest of my colleagues think. And letting that be treated more as, as they are under the current ordinance, which means that if it's not actually dead. Then you look at it to see if it's a hazard and if it's not a hazard, then there, and you wanna replace it, there would be some replacement requirements. So I hope that's, I hope that's clear. We're not saying that this is perfect. We're recognizing that there's a gap created here, but I think combining again, some of the things that we talked about earlier about again, with the funding, we can make up some of the gap, but, but maybe this gap we've created is a little bit bigger than we can make up with some of those other strategies. That's, I think that's the question we need to figure out and try to get answered tonight.
And Councilman Kovar, when you're talking about that, or I just pulled up the power, are you talking about the, sort of the middle grouping, which under the revised numbering would be a ten to sixteen, which was the middle, the middle group before was a sixteen to twenty-four?
Well, I'm not sure you can just say it off of the chart because there's different reasons why a tree might not score higher. I'm talking about specifically the category of dying or imminent decline and dead or imminent decline. And so it's more art than science, I think, to, you might, you might ask three arborists to come and they might all say that tree's gonna be gone in a month. Another one might say that tree could last two years and a third one might say something different. But I think that's, that's a question. Is that a category that we wanna say should, shouldn't have replacement requirement? And I think we're open to doing it, but we didn't know that there was a pretty big number that it would have.
Is that on the chart though? Like where do those show?
Yeah, Mayor, the place where you can see that best is the, the lowest ratings. What used to be six to fifteen, which required replanting, now turns into four to nine and there is no replant. So that's where the loss is. And then if you go to that attached sheet that I provided of the years, of years worth of data, that's where you see comparatively the change in replanting requirements from the current system to the proposed system.
Okay, so it's really, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's the lower rated trees. And also the other thing that's happening is we, we lost a layer in the middle. Instead of three layers or four layers, there's just three. So even though we kept the same percentage as three percent at the top. It's a smaller wedge than it used to be. So in addition to the loss of replanting at the lowest range. You also have fewer, fewer levels and lower percentages. It's probably too late to talk math. But when you are awake, you can look at that chart and I think it, it once you sit with it a while, you kinda get, get where the change happens.
But the other thing, I don't know if someone else is waiting to talk, but one option would be, and this gets back to what Councilmember Smith said earlier, if there's a way, and I don't know if the right word is subsidize, but if there's a way to finance helping people for whom the replacement is a financial challenge, then maybe the structure can be, the numerical structure in the chart can be set up so that there's more replacement, but some people get help with it. I don't know to what extent that's, that's been a barrier or if there's been more people who could afford it anyway, who just thought when they're paying a ton of money to get a tree taken down, they don't wanna pay the extra. I'm not sure about that.
Okay, I just, before we leave this chart, I just wanna ask one more question, Ms. Braithwaite, because I'm looking at what is now the ten to sixteen rating. And if we compare that to the middle grouping last time, sixteen to twenty-four. I see there's also a difference there in terms of the replacement. Is that making a big part of the difference?
So I can't hear anything. Anyway, thanks for putting the chart back up. So you were saying in the ten to sixteen range?
Yeah, comparing that to what, what used to be the sixteen to twenty-four, and I don't know if I'm, if this is
Right, right. In the, in the effort to maintain a similar percentage, you actually end up with sort of a lower percentage because you've got fewer, fewer categories than you did before.
Let's see, Councilwoman Circe.
Thank you all so much for, for working on this and, and I wonder if the right answer is some combination of all of the options that have been put before us, right? If we, if we find that more often than not those folks who are you know, removing trees that are relatively healthy because of construction. Then the replacement may, may be more feasible than those who are replacing, who are picking out trees that are in active decline. And I think that's the category that's in question. And, and I actually support having that active decline category. Cause I think more often than not, there's, this is where most people would fall. I'm not opposed to a one, a one for one. So I had to take one down, I have to put one back. I think that's palatable. One of the things that I sometimes wonder are the weekend tree bandits, right? So the people who know that our process is somewhat stringent. And therefore, you know, they take their chances and don't try to go through the process of getting a permit for the tree to be removed. And instead, you know, find someone to take it out on the weekend. I wonder if by coming up with this category of inactive decline, you know, trees that are in active decline. That we enable a waiver and then we require like a one for one. If that might actually encourage more people to not just take out a tree, you know, we don't know the extent to which this is happening. But it might encourage people to not take out a tree on the weekends, right, when no one's looking. And instead work through the process and actually replace that tree. So I know that we can't quantify that, but that's, that, that is something that I've been trying to, to, to think through. Whether or not, you know, by lessening the replacement requirement, particularly on those trees that are in the active decline stage. If we might actually encourage more people to go ahead and submit a permit and do it the right way. Because they just have to replace the tree that they're, they're gonna have to take down. So, so that's the, the one thing that has come to mind for me. I don't know, Daryl Braithwaite, if that's something that you know, you think is, is a possibility or that, that most people who need to take down a tree actually go, do it the right way and go through the permitting process?
Perhaps I'm a little Pollyannaish, but I think most people follow the process. Only because when we have an illegal removal, we, we hear about it. So neighbors are particularly keen on chainsaw sounds and we get called, people inquiring if someone has permits and giving us information, taking pictures. So there is kind of an active sort of sense of protectiveness for the trees. Now, you know, you don't know what you don't know. So there could be stuff going on that we're not aware of, but we do have calls from time to time. So it's been my sense that people are following the process, but you know, I could be, I could be misled on that.
But, but I do think that maybe it might be helpful when we all have a little, are not tired and it's not almost one AM. To kind of play around with some of the options and whether or not some combination of them might get us to that sweet spot where we're creating the incentives for folks to plant, but not creating all of these disincentives for people who, who have trees that are in active decline from being able to do what they need to do for their homes. So, so that's where my brain is, but it's late. So, thanks.
Councilwoman Kostic.
Yeah, just really briefly, I, I think, I have, I'm thinking similarly to, to what Councilmember Circe was saying in terms of some, maybe some combination of things. I, I think if we're looking to increase private property planting and we're looking to really broaden out and encourage people to do more planting. Then we have heard from people that, that sometimes they don't want to plant trees because they feel like they're going to be subject to these restrictive policies. And so I think we need to be aware of that and, and make sure that we're not putting in place an attempt to incentivize planting. But then also telling people they can't remove the trees after they plant them. I would be interested in, in understanding a little better what a shift, which I, I think the mayor was maybe inquiring about a little bit earlier, what, what a shift of, of maybe moving that middle category from a one percent to a two percent would do to our overall numbers. And if that would actually be similar to the, the existing requirement for that middle category of the I guess it would be the ten or the, I don't know what it is, ten to fifteen in the new rating. And then also what, what sort of impact increasing the highest level to that five percent that the Tree Commission had initially suggested as an option might do. And, and what exactly those trees are, are like? Are those really situations where people could pay that replacement? Or are they situations where people are truly, in some cases, removing a tree that might be a hazard? And if so, then, then that should hopefully be addressed through some other part of our, our ordinance.
Sure, we could run hypothetical, you know, based on last year's data, we could run hypothetical replacements based on percentages. So if you wanna give me a few scenarios, we can just work those numbers.
That'd be great. Thank you.
And actually Ms. Brayton, before, it's sort of, the, I guess, in looking at some of the different options. Thinking about staff capacity and needs of implementation, do you have preferences? For some of these options?
In terms of replanting or?
Yeah, I think we, we talked about what slide was it? Sorry. Potential impact, oh no. Yeah, you know, the one for one replacement of dying or dead trees. Or increasing the the percentage that we were just talking about. Are there, are there sort of things that are easier to put in place and to kind of manage from your perspective?
I think from an administrative point of view, it's all fairly similar. Once we have the, you know, the numbers in place. I think I did have some concerns about going up on the high end to five percent just because there would be some really significant large replants required with those types of numbers. So that was a little that seemed a little, a little more extreme. But, you know, when we run, when we run some of these scenarios and I can probably have a better sense. I, I think my, my original thought was one to one sort of seemed like a reasonable approach. And perhaps not even a mandated one to one for those lower rated trees, but to say here you can remove that tree. By the way, the city has this replanting program. And maybe there's a cost share arrangement or how, would you, you know, be up for replanting a tree in your property? And, you know, we can take care of the selection and the planting through our bulk buy program. That to me seemed like a way to make it simpler for people. They don't have to go shopping for trees. Kind of bring it to them. They don't have to dig the hole or hire somebody to do it. We could manage that through a contracted nursery. So I, I thought that, that does also have some administrative tracking. So there is some labor required with that. But I thought that was potentially a good way to try to make up some of those numbers.
Yeah, I think that might, I think that's an excellent idea. Again, not to bring it back to my own personal experiences over the last year or so. But we, since we did have to take down a rather large tree that was dead. And then when the bulk buy came around, it was, it, we did the bulk buy, but it was like one of those things like, oh, I wish I had thought about this when they were removing the tree and just thinking about it more holistically, but we didn't. So I think giving people those options. And the support, I think it's, it's what we've gotten back to a number of times in our conversations is also for folks who are not who don't know a lot about trees, for whom this, the idea of planting a tree is actually a daunting like exercise, providing that support is really helpful. So. Okay, Councilwoman Dibala.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of options. I like the one for one. But I, I, I do think there's a role for the community to take some responsibility here and not to put it all on the individual homeowner. So I I see a lot of trees that are old and dying, that are way beyond the ability of the homeowner. Even if they were the best maintainer in the world to be able to handle. So, and as I read the chart. A fairly large number of the trees that come out are trees that are in active decline. They're not coming out only because, sure, there's a lot of porches going, being expanded these days. But there is that category and it's not a small number of trees that are coming out because the canopy's getting old and it's maturing and trees die eventually. And they're hastened by the forces around us, climate, climate and otherwise. And, and I think there's a role for the community to take some responsibility and not to put it all on the homeowner. So I wouldn't wanna go back to where we were with changing that definition of active decline back where we were. That to me was one of the main points of, of making, of proposing these changes in the first place to the ordinance. That said, as I, as I started, one for one replacement, looking at both. That said, as I, as I started, one-for-one replacement, looking at bulk, but looking at bulk buy, looking at ways to support residents who need to deal with a replacement fee and can't man, and don't have the financial wherewithal to do it. I'd like to, I would like to see the options that, if Daryl could run some scenarios, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Well, seeing the hour, I'm going to propose some next steps to see if everyone is okay with that. So I would say that we're not ready to vote on this next week. That's not happening. Is that next week on July 8th, we all, over the Fourth of July weekend, do a little tree homework to look carefully at the resolution. Think about changes we want to make to that, additions, and come ready on, and share them with each other. But come ready to discuss the resolution and specific changes to that on July 8th. And so we'll do another work session on the 8th. And then on the 8th, also be, look closely at, I think Councilwoman Kostic really outlined some of the key places to look at in the ordinance. The replacement numbers that we were just talking about. And Ms. Braithwaite will run some other different models and options for us to consider. Look at the reports to council section and legislative findings. The city manager did also send us a, some suggestions to one of the sections regarding the city manager's authority. And then any other areas, people may pick up smaller things. But I think if we come back and do another work session next week, particularly prioritizing the resolution and then moving forward on some of these other places where we can dig in on the ordinance and see how much we can get through next week and then come back and do the, the vote on the resolution, the first reading ordinance, see if we're ready either on July 15th or July 22nd, because that would still give us the week of July 29th to do the second reading of the ordinance. So does that sound like a good Councilmember Kovar? Yeah. Are you, we can't hear you.
I just want to mention one other thing, and it fits in with just what you were talking about in terms of the timing. Through the process of trying to finalize these drafts, which are, are still just drafts, I don't know if my two colleagues had the same experience, but we've been, I've been made aware just by people in the community of a number of changes that they think could make sense. Some do, some don't. But also a group of technical changes. We had one definition that just disappeared from, from, from the document and so on. So I was planning to, you know, share those with, with the city attorney and staff. But I don't, you know, our colleagues don't have to feel limited to what we just talked about. If there are other aspects of this that they want us to get into. And I think I had mentioned, for example, I have a concern about what happens when, as in the Montgomery College building, there are very large numbers of removal, you know, more than 50 trees being proposed to be removed. We have a separate, I'm, I'm planning to offer an amendment for a separate language on that. And we have, I think, worked out partly at least the city manager authority question that just came up. So I, it's the appropriate point to bring up other additional smaller changes that weren't part of the PowerPoint today, I guess is what I would say.
Yeah, I, I kind of said other areas and I was, that's what I, that may be of interest to people. But yeah.
Yeah, that sounds like a great plan. And I would urge that, because we do, we do want to get through this before the recess, that we bring those, we circulate those kinds of things even before the meeting on Wednesday for people to, to think about those that have the capacity to, to get into the details a little bit more so that, that we can, we can be, be prepared on Wednesday to be able to say on some of these other additions, yea or nay. I would like to say that we, as a, as a group, the three of us, talked about two lists, one, well, three. One, typos and technical corrections. And nobody, you just make a list, nobody needs to think about that for more than a minute, right? They're not hard. Things that are, are pretty straightforward, changes that we can agree on pretty quickly, get packaged altogether, this is group two, and we just thumbs up, thumbs down about the package. And then those few things, and maybe the city manager pieces is one of those. It's, you know, as Peter said, we're pretty close on that. The third one, what are those limited numbers of things that we really do need to address as a group of all these suggestions from residents that are pouring in? Which ones do we really need to address as a group and are not strictly technical or fairly easily accomplished? So if we think about it that way, maybe it doesn't sound so daunting for next Wednesday.
If I might, as, you know, we're already late in the process for posting for next week, and we do have a holiday. So I think that, you know, the more that by, by next week's meeting, some pretty close to good lists of the, of your recommendations, some hand votes, those kinds of things can be discussed next Wednesday, then the public has an opportunity to review it for future action. I am concerned about having enough time for the public to review the main points.
Yes, yeah, I wasn't thinking we would post anything new before the meeting next week. And that's why I'm even thinking we're most likely voting on this the 22nd and 29th. But it makes me a little nervous because, just in case we're not prepared. So, but yeah, that's what I was thinking. Cool. Anything else? No? All right. I think we're done then. It's before 1:00. So thank you, everyone. Remember to socially distance if you're doing anything over the weekend. And for the council, please dig into the tree resolution ordinance. And thank you to everybody. Have a nice evening or morning or whatever. Good night.
I want to thank all my colleagues for...